Board of Selectmen meeting. Tonight we'll go through our Selectmen Liaison and Reports, have public comment. We'll hear Bob speak about the Town Managers Report. We'll have a report by the Ad Hoc Zoning Advisory Committee. At 7:15, the RMLD Citizen Advisory Member Report will be given. 7:25, RCTV Member Report. At 8 o'clock, a hearing on a liquor license transfer for the Wine Bunker. At 8:10, a report from Reading Ice Arena Authority. At 8:20, a project update on the Auburn Street Water Tank. At 8:30, an update on the ongoing discussion about signalization and safety at Franklin and Main, as well as deal with other traffic issues, a quick update of the West Street Project Overview, a chat about downtown parking, and finally, at 9:30, a continuation of the discussion about government reorganization, finally ending with a review of the minutes. With that, I will take any and all Selectmen Liaison's report. Ben, anything to report?
Yeah, thank you, John. Good evening, everyone. Bob, in his Town Managers Report is going to report on, I think, briefly, a visit that a number of us made to the post office facility on Haven Street. As anybody who's walked down Haven may have noticed, there's a "For Sale" sign on the building. So, they've actually engaged a Realtor who is talking to interested parties about the building. So, we got a little tour to take a look at it, and, you know, once Bob presses on his comments, I'll do mine as well. And then, this morning, I had a discussion with Bob and members of the Board of Library Trustees and librarian, Ruth Yurel, as a follow-up of the discussion that we had with the library staff who came to our meeting a couple weeks ago, but I'll have more comments on that when we get to the reorganization item, you know, on the agenda. But suffice it to say that the trustees are also concerned along the lines that the library staff were when they came to see us. And I think that's it for now. Oh, wait, no, one more thing, I'm sorry. The state legislature, the initiative's been taken by the state senate, has put forward a bill whose goal it is to provide reimbursement to communities who've invested significantly in water infrastructure, and to provide additional funds for future water infrastructure work. So, I've been following up with Senator Clark's office. Senator Clark's one of the cosponsors of the bill. The bill is in support of the senate president, Therese Murray, which is typically a very good sign. But I'm going to need to get some information from town staff, because some of the way that we've gotten funding is a little different than what is anticipated in the bill, and I want to make sure that, as this thing goes forward, that we're covered, basically, so that we have the same capability of recovering some of our investment that other communities have had.
Would this come through MWRA, or would it be some other vehicle?
Well, this would be money from the state directly to cover the debt relief, basically, for communities that have borrowed money. There's a, we've used the MWRA and just our private bonding authority, but some other communities have gone through a trust that the state runs. So, one of the requests I have in the town staff is, why did we choose the vehicle we chose instead of this other one? Because the bill anticipates relieving debt from the state-run trust. And I want to make sure that if there's money allocated, that it covers the mechanism that we used, as well as these other communities have used, or at least, we get a good explanation for, you know, for why there's a particular approach in the legislation. But overall, it's a very good, very positive sign that this, you know, the state is looking to help communities, because as we know, you know, we have a substantial future investment, as well as a substantial past investment that we've made in our water infrastructure.
Good news. Anything else?
That's it, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Marcy?
Yeah, the first zoning, zoning advisory committee meeting happened last week, and we are down two members. However, I've recruited a couple of folks, so I believe one of them you should have an application for, for the volunteer committee. I think one came in.
I haven't seen it.
You haven't seen it yet? No? Okay. I'll check back, because somebody told me that they had sent it, so. And then I have someone else who's actually got some compliance things they're trying to work through right now with their company, so hopefully, those two will actually be filled. And the initial meeting, we had the consultant here, talked a little bit about the process, and because we don't have the full complement, we actually held off on doing any kind of organization yet, since we don't have all the members, so next meeting, we'll probably do that. We're likely to have meetings that are with the consultant, and then intro meetings of the committee in between that, to move things along.
Thank you for recruiting. It's always nice when you make a suggestion or two.
See if they actually get all the way across the line, right? When they're sitting up here for the meeting, then we'll know that we've done it.
Anything else?
That's it.
Yeah?
Thanks, John. On September 26th, Chairman Vonnazoli and I attended the annual recassa meeting. It was my first meeting, there were about 50 concerned people there. I expected a slightly bigger crowd, but the folks that were there were definitely interested in the proceedings. I guess one thing that struck me was the breadth of subject matter that was discussed. It wasn't simply substance abuse, but it went to the behavioral studies being conducted in the schools. There are a lot of hidden issues in the community that they're doing good work on. One could almost conclude that some of the questionnaires that are given to the kids on a totally voluntary basis between students and parents are very intrusive. They do ask about certain behavioral issues. On the other hand, if you don't ask the questions, you don't know what's out there in the community, and it's done in a very confidential way and totally voluntary. So, there was a breadth of issues discovered, discussed from suicide prevention to substance abuse. I was impressed with the breadth of work that's ongoing.
Do you know if the nature of that survey is mandated?
No, it is not. You mean, the content?
The content.
That I don't know. That I don't know. There's probably some guidance from the state. Struck me as being mostly developed locally.
I think it's local.
Yesterday, also, I was able with Bob and several interested citizens, a few of whom are here tonight, at least one, to attend the state DOT roadway safety audit for Manning Franklin. It began with a session in the police station, and we did a site visit, and that is on our agenda tonight for further discussion, so I'll defer that to that point. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any, anyone here tonight for public comment? Please stand.
I might be for that.
Could you stand and just, could you read your name, please? Just tell us who you are and where you live.
Bill Hallison, what you wrote concerning the article in the paper tonight about talking traffic, I don't know whether that would be under this open session or not.
I have to admit, I raced here without getting a glimpse at the chronicle, so I'm ignorant of what you speak of.
It must be the 8:30 agenda item, I assume.
Okay. Yeah, we'll be talking about that at 8:30 in detail. So, there'll be a whole segment dedicated for this in about an hour fifteen minutes.
Okay.
If you'd like, you can read your comments now if you'd like, or you can wait for the discussion.
I can make the comments now, if you want.
Right ahead.
Okay, fine. This is concern, I'd like to talk about the traffic on Birch Meadow Drive. My neighbor gave me a cutout from the chronicle a while ago, calling it the Reading Speedway. I don't know whether people have seen that or not, but it's quite interesting. I can't say that, I can say, actually, that I am very favorable whoever wrote this. It's only signed by a concerned citizen, so I don't know who it is. But my neighbor had cut it out, and I think he went to a meeting way back sometime a while. If I can just quote from the article in the paper, I appreciate it. Whoever this person is, he says, "I would like to bring attention to the citizens of Reading about the Reading Speedway, AKA Birch Meadow Drive, located between Main Street and John Cawker Road. This Speedway is within the area of three schools, Reading Memorial High School, Coolidge Middle School, and Birch Meadow Elementary School, also many sports fields and the YMCA. Unfortunately, this area has no signage identifying it as school zones. At the start of the school in the morning and dismissal in the afternoon, motorists ignore the 20 mile speed, mile hour, speed signs, which are few and far between on Birch Meadow Drive, not only when students arrive and leave the school, but continuously all day. Stop signs at the foot of Arthur B. Lord Drive and Oakland Road may as well not be there. What will it take to have school zone signs installed on this busy road? As in the area of all other schools in town, crossing guards do the best they can and often are ignored. There is one sign identifying playground on Birch Meadow Drive, which brings to mind in the summertime, there is a great deal of activity in this area, not only in the daytime, but early evening as well. Summertime at the school areas should not be ignored. A recent article in the AAA newsletter asking if obeying school signs even when school is not in session, for instance, after-school hours, weekends, summer, and other weekly times, have to be obeyed. The answer, and I quote, "You must obey the slower speed posted speeds limit in school zones, or be subject to fines." Which brings me back to my opening words, why are there no signs in Birch Meadow Drive identifying the three schools in the area? Speed limits should be posted as well as enforced. Concerned citizens signed by it." So, I don't know who it is, but my neighbor had cut it out way back when it was originally in the paper. I've got to agree with almost everything he says, because I'm a walker. I'm up early in the morning, I go down walking. I usually meet up with a friend of mine at the foot of Arthur B. Lord Drive, sit on the bench for a while, and then we go for a walk. Watching cars coming up there and everything, I dare say, quite a few near misses coming out, cars coming out of Arthur B. Lord Drive onto Birch Meadow Drive, there's quite a few near misses there. Last week, just for the heck of it, not realizing I was going to be here tonight even, we counted 20 cars coming down Arthur B. Lord Drive, 18 of them went to the stop sign without stopping. So, I think really, the town has to take a hard look on some way to protect the kids that are going to school, coming out of school, during summer vacations, activity with sports going on down there all the time. I think a town, the town should really take a hard look at it. And for myself, I would appreciate the town taking a hard look at it. I don't have children in the schools, so I'm way past that age, and, but I think it's something that towns should really look into real deeply.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? What time was it when you did that count?
That time was between 7 o'clock and 7:30 in the morning.
And the stop sign you're talking about is the one at the Oakland Road, Birch Meadow Drive?
Oakland Road.
Did I just talk about Arthur B. Lord?
I can't even touch the bottom of it. My ceiling's in my house is seven foot high if I stand on my tiptoes, and I can't touch the bottom of that sign. Maybe they don't even see the sign, for all I know.
Just to clarify, you're talking about 18 out of 20 running the Arthur B. Lord at Birch Meadows sign, or Oakland?
No, coming down Oakland, going onto Birch Meadow Drive.
I think we run into each other on your walk.
Yeah.
You're the gentleman that has dog biscuits, right?
I do, yeah.
Yes, I know you well.
I have a lot of friends that work.
I have observed.
Have you been sick?
No, I've been well.
He eats breakfast first.
I'm there, rain or shine, makes no difference. No, but seriously, I think it is a real serious situation that the town should look into.
Bob, one of the things that, thank you for your comments, by the way.
Thank you.
One of the things that we talked about when we discussed the island, the concept before the termination of Oakland Road was additional stop signage to provide safety enhancement for, it's the same argument that was raised earlier, school, kids walking to and fro school. That never got baked into the plan for that corner. Is there a vehicle to do that now?
You know, I'd really rather the chief to answer that question in any details. You know, the one thing I'll observe, which is just completely by coincidence, is a resident came up to me this morning and was commenting on that revised intersection at Oakland Road and Birch Meadow, and I'm not taking sides. They said, "It's amazing how it slowed down traffic."
I've observed some of that myself.
I would have to guess that 7 to 7:30, 7:45 traffic is the worst, because people rush into school, you know, and no matter what you, you know, you could put up a barricade in front of some people, they're still going to rush through it.
There's a lot of early morning traffic to the Y and Arthur B. Lord, in addition to the two schools there, so that's a very congested area in the morning. I've observed that.
Yeah, I know the police have spent a lot of time, more so recently, out on Birch Meadow, trying to figure it out. I drop off from the high school, and there's been a police cruiser on Oakland Road for, I'm going to guess, two-thirds of the school year, maybe not quite, maybe half. So, there's a presence, but what they conclude, I really need to let them, you know, speak to that. I don't know.
Yeah, there's two questions, I guess. Wasn't there at one point a speed bump on or about Coolidge? Am I misremembering?
Not a.
There's a crosswalk that might have been slightly elevated, but not really a speed.
It gave you the perception of speed, right?
It probably gave you that impression, but not physically, more vision.
Probably worth looking at that. I mean, this was a discussion about the high school being the primary place kids are going to and fro, and whether or not, for its safety alone, obviously, you can't use signage to regulate speed.
Yeah.
Whether or not it makes sense to add some more signage there at that intersection.
Yeah, it's as much a parent problem as a student problem, the drop-offs, plus the people at the Y.
I assume if you're on the foot, it's not the problem. It's mostly the ones behind the wheel.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I bet you want the drivers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other public comment? Okay, we move to the Town Managers' Report?
Okay, thanks, John. I'll just go over a couple of things that haven't been covered. October 15th, just for the community, 7:00 PM is the deadline, that's a week from tonight, I believe, to receive your 10% discount on water, sewer, and stormwater. And other than licensing dogs, this is the most arguments we ever have, with people that come in the next morning and say, "Well, I meant to pay last night." And honestly, you really have to come in by 7 o'clock on Tuesday to get the 10% discount. The only exceptions that I've ever made in the last eight years here are if you're physically unable to, because you're in the hospital, that's a good excuse.
Bob, if an envelope is dropped in the night?
If they put it in, you know, before 7 o'clock at night, well, after it, after 7, so that's fine. If they put it in at 10 o'clock that night, I can't make any promises. I don't know when the staff's going to empty it. Some good news, it took a little longer than any of us expected, but out of that special meeting you folks had one night to clarify the library debt exclusion issue, today, the governor did sign the act that Reading asked for. So, we're now free and clear to borrow for the library, and I have to really tip my cap, because all three of our legislatures did some heavy lifting on this and what seemed like a simple thing, but there was a lot of back and forth on this, and I appreciate their help. On page four of tonight, there's a summary of the meals tax year-to-date, or forever-to-date. After the next quarter goes by, we'll have surpassed $1 million in cumulative revenue, which is kind of a nice milestone, you know, and I just give you that for the history. Our run rate is almost $400,000 a year. We have a couple more restaurants opening up, so it should be pretty solid at $400,000. And back to the original discussion when this first came out, the state was estimating $150,000 for Reading. And we all kind of knew that, based on the way they did their math, that it was light, but I can't say any of us at the time expected $400,000. So, that's worked out really well for the town.
Any explanation why it seems to be sloped? Is it a compliance issue over the course of the year?
Show me where you mean.
Your chart showing the four X, four times this quarter?
Oh, I, well, I did two different ways. I just multiplied the quarter by four, and then I did a 12-month, because really, the restaurant business is seasonal, you really should just look at the 12-month chart. You know, you can't, and the way the state does this, it's purported to always be the same period of time, but in fact, depending on when weekends and holidays are, it's not exactly. But, you know, the trend is generally upward, not sharply, but just steadily, which, you know, is kind of a nice source of revenue.
Which makes sense, because that's where our growth has been, business growth has been in restaurants, so it makes sense that that would be trending up, right?
It's the consistent trend in the course of 12 months that's a little surprising. I would have expected to be more episodic.
To follow up on Ben's comments, a number of us did go down and toured the post office, met with one of the Realtors that's in charge of handling the disposition of property across the country. I'm sure we all came away with our different opinions. It was late on Thursday, so I haven't had a chance to talk to staff who's out this week about it. Ben and I talked for a little while afterwards. At the very least, the town wants to stay on the inside track and information on this. We want to know what's going on, and if they suddenly develop some interest outside in a timeframe, we want to know that. Whether or not the town is involved in any attempt to purchase this, we certainly have a vested interest. It's right in the middle of the two main streets of our downtown. We have a strong vested interest in what goes in there. Quite frankly, the last thing from an economic development standpoint we want is to have a warehouse business there, and that's what it is. So, you know, I'll keep the board appraised and to any other discussions we have. Normally, if I take a step back and we are looking at a piece of property, we do it as we did the St. Agnes property. We'd, if the extent, you know, to the extent we're interested in the property and we wanted to secure it, we might send a letter of intent. We would then scope out what the real cost is, not just to buy the property, but how we want to use it. We'd have to have lots of public meetings, lots of discussion about that, and you'd spend a certain amount of money to develop that estimate. And then ultimately, depending on what the project was and the cost was, you'd either go forward or not, and you'd either do it inside or outside the tax levy. These are all questions to be decided. If, on this one, if the price is right, I don't need that we know that we need to do all that. The parking alone has a certain value to it, and if we can buy the whole property for what the parking would cost to build, I think that's something we'll need to discuss. And I don't have any reason to think we can, but just to keep an open mind, you know, the federal government moves even slower than the local governments, so I don't think that it's going to be sold in a week or two. They said they had no timeframe at all. But we might want to really start thinking about, you know, at the board and committee level, would we want that property for some reason? We've discussed it extensively with staff, because we looked at it for a temporary library location, we looked at it for a possible school, and neither of those really worked out too well. It potentially could be a storage facility for library material, but it wasn't going to make a good temporary library without putting a fair amount of money into it. So, in its, sort of, the immediate needs we had facilities-wise didn't really fit. But whether you want to expand into something else that we don't currently have a specific need for, but would be nice to have, you know, that's something worth discussing. Would we be eligible for an executive session to discuss the details of this? It might be worthwhile, you know, doing that in a coming agenda.
Okay. Do you, you mentioned earlier about wanting an inside track, Bob. Is there a vehicle for us to be plugged into what's happening?
Well, we spoke to the Realtor, you know, exchanged contact information, and I asked him to send me some things, which he will, and, you know, just to keep us in the loop in terms of any timeframe developments. Right now, it's, I guess loosely, you know, first come, first served, and I said, "Well, we're here, we want to be served, give us last look." And he said, "That's fine." He said, "You know, the town's got strong finances, if you will, you're a good candidate. You know, we'll certainly give you a last look if we get approached."
But the connection's through the Realtor, not through the post office?
Right, but the Realtor's totally handling all the stuff. The post office is not, if you will, in the way of this. Now, the post office has a strong interest in retaining a presence in that area generally, and that's a separate discussion. So, they absolutely would not have hands-off to the sale, but if they had a location that was acceptable to them, you know, then in some period of time, and how fast they would act, and I don't think any of us know, you know, then it's at least a possibility. It was obvious from going in there, and the Realtor confirmed that much all of the back-room operation there has already moved to Woburn. So, you know, they're not really using a lot of the space in the way that they would have used it, say, a year ago. And the other thing is that this Realtor has some kind of ongoing contract with postal services. They're doing this for the other facilities in Boston metropolitan area.
This is CB Richard Ellis?
Yeah. And then they do the other end of the deal as well, so they find the retail space to make up for that.
It seems like there's two aspects of that. One is that the current tenant decides to relocate, which they're free to do, but we'd like to create maybe a reason for them to stay put. The other is that somebody else finds a more creative use for the property, and so it's worth an executive session to talk about it.
Okay. On the page of motions, there's a motion under 1C. A library has requested a one-day liquor license for their annual donor recognition event scheduled for November 15th. And again, that's something we've done before, and I have certainly no objection to.
Is that something you can handle administratively, without a vote from us?
No, you need to vote.
Oh.
It's this.
Because it's a town.
It's a public property, so that's what we have to do. It's not the one-day license. Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the one-day special liquor license and approve such event in a public building pursuant to Section 8.9.4.2 of the general bylaws for the donor recognition event at 64 Middlesex Avenue on November 15th, 2013, from 7:00 PM until 10:30 PM.
I'll second that. Hallison, favor?
Thank you. I'll skip down to Manning Franklin. We're going to have a discussion later, but I do want to let the board know, as Dan would have heard, they're having some information that they need to process, and they're not going to have that until, I think it was next Tuesday, Dan?
Yeah.
So, we won't have a full story tonight. We're going to get more information next week. So, we'll follow up with you on a next meeting as to what that information was. What was presented to us briefly was kind of what they described as short-term, intermediate, and long-term solutions, although I only remember the short and the long. You know, and the short is very promising, and honestly, to my non-professional eyes, it probably solves the problem. I don't know that there's another solution needed. Traffic and safety, we have that later tonight. We did meet with North Reading Public Works, and, you know, we will have ongoing discussions about them hooking up to the MWRA. It's especially important for us to get involved in that discussion now, because of capital projects we have planned that would change if the MWRA was going to run water through us to North Reading. So, right now, we have some water main work scheduled for Main Street, and quite frankly, we'd put in a larger pipe if we knew this was a possibility, and it's scheduled to go out to bid this winter. So, North Reading got the idea, the timing was kind of of the essence here, and, you know, depending on how fast things move, my suggestion would be we put in the larger water main, because the incremental cost is tiny compared to ripping the road up again in five years when they're going to do something.
To the degree there is an incremental cost, would that be offset? They'd kick in?
Yeah, yeah. That's really all I have for tonight, other than to point out, on October 18th, if the board is interested, there's a ribbon-cutting ceremony at Sturgis Park at 4:30.
Bob, I have next on the agenda, the Ad Hoc Zoning Advisory Committee. You can see that in the, read ahead.
Did you have any implications? No. Yeah, I expected some, as Marcy did, and I didn't see any, so I skipped those.
Let's see. We should move to the RMLD Citizen Advisory Board Member Report? Good evening.
Hi. Do you have specific questions?
I'm going to just introduce yourself.
Tony Capobianco, Reading member of the CAB.
And why don't the whole audience, just you explain what the CAB is and who's on it and why they're there?
The CAB is a result of a 20-year agreement among the service territories for the RMLD of Reading, Wilmington, North Reading, and part of Linfield. So, the RMLD Board of Commissioners is comprised of Reading residents, whereas the CAB, we have a member from Reading, two members from Wilmington, one from North Reading, and one from Linfield, Hatton of Linfield. And it's essentially, there was, quite some time ago, there was a lawsuit brought against the town of Reading, where somebody at the towns felt they weren't being adequately represented. So, there was an agreement struck, whereas the five-member board of the CAB that represents their respective communities is appointed by each town's Board of Selectmen.
So, tonight is just an opportunity for, you know, the CAB to share any information or the board to ask questions. We usually have them in once or twice a year. Certainly no burning issues, this is new general manager who's very busy, I know. I met with her last week.
Right, right. She's very interesting. I met with her privately, I'm sure. I believe she met, came before the board, I believe.
Yeah, she was introduced to the board.
Yeah, she, she's really working towards becoming more of a proactive organization, rather than reactive. rather than reactive. And a prime example is recently there was a transformer that leaked oil, and as a result, there was pretty substantial cleanup costs where they had to remove about eight, I would call, about the size of portable on-demand storage containers, eight of those full of dirt from the oil that leaked. And what happened was this is a 40-year-old transformer that just rusted out and leaked. So, there really wasn't a proactive inspection program in place. So, those are the things that she's working towards to maybe spend that small amount of money, well, spend that amount of money upfront to ensure we don't incur any of these sort of issues again. And she, oh, sorry. Go ahead. And she's also, in any of her considerations, she said one of the main things, she will always look at sort of green or renewable options as well when considering any implementation or implementing new technology. One thing that has come up before in our meetings has been LED streetlights. So, there needs to be a process of identifying whether or not they're good for the towns or the service area. One thing I didn't think of that she mentioned was, you know, if you're doing, if they're driving by and doing a line inspection, some bulbs will essentially blind you if you look directly at them and if you can't look at the line, so you can't perform adequate maintenance. They're working on better response times, so they can, any power outages, they can reroute power, or they can identify them much more quickly to bring certain return service.
I know one of the issues she mentioned with me, and this will come in the future, is they're redoing, I guess is the fairest way to say it, their approach and marketing of green power. And in the past, there's been kind of a small program. You could sign up for a couple of extra bucks a month. You weren't exactly sure what you were getting, but you felt good. And she said, "That's all well and fine, but it'd be much better to have a much more tangible result where Reading folks could sign up for something and see what they're doing or see what they're using." So, for instance, you know, if you put a solar collector on Town Hall, which you can't do, but if you could, that would be a tangible, you know, cost item that Reading could see and understand. She says it's a little too soon in her tenure to come up with a solution like that, but she's very interested in, you know, our feedback. And I agreed with her. I thought something tangible. And I said, "I don't think there was really a lot of marketing of that last effort. Marcy would know better." You know, it wasn't adopted that highly, but I said, "There must be some appetite in this community for that, especially if they can see it."
Okay. To that end, Bob, I can tell you my employer put panels on the roof and put a vehicle where anyone in the building can see what the current and total produced power is, and it's interesting because the amount of magnitude of what's generated is enormous. It doesn't tell you about the economics, but it tells you about the efficiency. So, it's a good way to kind of market the value constantly to people. I've got a couple of questions for Tony very quickly. Could you bring us up to speed on the current state of the renewable energy certificate policy? Where's the policy right now?
It hasn't changed.
What is it right now?
It's, they're only retiring the portion of individuals who are participating in the Green Choice Program and selling the remainder.
And that's based on a dollar-weighted average or a record weight average?
That would be a dollar-weighted average. I believe.
I believe the policy doesn't actually state what that, what that ratio is unless it's changed.
Well, it hasn't changed. I mean, there are some that are worth more than others, so my guess is they're retiring the...
More valuable.
Yeah, the less valuable and recouping the money on the more valuable and applying that to the fuel charge.
Right. Is there a plan to return to the policy and either refresh it from time to time or?
That was brought up at our last CAD meeting, and that may or may not be on the agenda for our October meeting, which is now currently tentative. As far as the Board of Commissioners, I don't know if they plan on revisiting that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When is that next board meeting?
The RMLD board meeting? It's, let's see, what's today's date?
Eight.
The CAD meeting would be the 18th and probably, I think it's the fourth Wednesday, approximately. I'd have to check. The 18th would be the CAD meeting.
I get agendas usually in advance.
Twenty-third is our tentative meeting. So, it would either be the 16th or the 30th, I guess. That I don't have, I don't have the date of that.
Tony, one of the things I'd be keen to get at a future date is the, the method and schedule for such LED lighting. I think that's one of the exciting areas is lighting. It's everywhere. It's ubiquitous. And one way is to both save the dollars and energy spend and get frankly more light is, it's an exciting area. I'd be keen to get a report back at some future date in terms of what the RMLD's practice and policy will be.
Yes, I brought that up with the general manager, and they need to do some case studies first to identify. She had mentioned when she was previously in Danvers, they selected an intersection where you could have a perfect line of sight in four different directions and tried four different lights in each direction and tested that. They tested the lunens each time to see if there's any degradation. Then you, yeah, obviously then you have to weigh the cost of replacing the connections, you know, for each, for the head for where we're plugging the bulb right now. But it is something that, you know, I've brought up before and I hope to discuss further.
So, my question would be if they've already done a case study in, what town was she in? Peabody before? Danvers?
Danvers.
Why wouldn't, why couldn't we leverage that experience as opposed to needing to do our own case study?
I'm not sure if there are different circumstances. I don't know the details of their, of Danvers' case study. I know Boston has installed them. I think Los Angeles installed hundreds of thousands of them.
Plenty of case studies one, three years.
Yeah, right. So, I don't think that has been significantly investigated yet, largely because the general manager position was vacant for such an extended period, and the new general manager is still finding out what she has.
Any other questions? Thank you. We're behind schedule. Next, we have scheduled the RCTV member report.
It'd be great. Remember, this is definitely, and this actually wants for people in the audience who want to see it. Can we get going? Hey, why don't you folks first introduce yourselves?
I'm Kevin Walsh. I'm one of the selectmen representatives, and with me here tonight is Ted Smithhurst. Some of you know him. He's also, he's the other, the other one. With us also here today is John Carpenter, who is the school committee representative and a bit of an expert. I'm going to try to put this in. Bob, you can probably help me.
Yeah, you talk, Cole. Thank you.
All right, now move this stuff along. Earlier today, I'm going to start the presentation. Is that all right, Mr. Chairman? Earlier today, I had occasion to get onto the RCTV website to see what was going to be on tonight. I was looking for something that was going to be on, and I noticed an empty chair for one of RCTV's best producers, who was Dick Curtis. Many of you know him. He passed away a couple of weeks ago, right after the street fair. He produced Reading at Large. He produced Time Will Tell. And I was reminded that Dick did what I do and what many other members do, and that's we produce shows as members, as volunteers, if we produce shows. On that website, I also found a whole bunch of other stuff that, you know, we want to make sure you know about. How to get ahold of us, you know, how to make your own show, how to become a member. There's, of course, the list on the website, when the selectmen's meetings are, when the FinCom meetings are, ask the town manager when it's on, school committee meetings, et cetera. You can even link on YouTube to old town meetings, to the dedication to Sally Hoyt, for example, who was the, as you know, the selectman, and she just had a room dedicated to her over at the Pleasant Street Center. And there's other things on the website that you may not even think that RCTV does that you can get involved with. Now, RCTV has been around for 15 years, very involved in the community as a producer of local interest shows. It also is now a meeting place for, meeting place for other people in Reading, other events, a place to rent, for example, for a retirement party, for a sporting event, for political gathering, for birthday parties. I'm a board member, again, the selectmen's representative. I'm a volunteer and producer. Again, what I do is what all the members do. We produce shows about Reading events. Now, I just filmed and edited, for example, the Pleasant Street, the Sally Hoyt dedication. So, it was a half an hour video. It was wonderful for her family. It was wonderful for people who are seniors in the town that can see what's happening at the Pleasant Street Center. And that's a little bit of what I do, being on both the Council on Aging and the Reading TV. I show events happening in the senior center, show events pertinent to seniors. I produce probably about 60 shows, many football games, and probably about 20 different senior events. Again, showing the seniors some of the services that we have here in Reading. Recently, I'm working on a show about scams for seniors to avoid and safety for seniors where we had, over at the Pleasant Street Center, we had Jim Collins, who's the community relations officer, talk about some of the different things that are, you know, phone calls are some of the seniors getting, some of the other things. And again, that's just one of the things that Reading TV does. It's one of the things that I do as a producer. So, what I'm going to do now is go through the first few slides, and then I'm going to hand this over to Ted, who'll be doing the second half of the presentation. Any questions before I begin?
No, great.
Okay, page two. Again, nonprofit, we are a separate entity. Oh, thank you. We are, the current contract, as a reminder, of Town of Reading started, it started in November of 2008. We're halfway through it, John. Halfway through?
Yeah.
Broadcasting three channels. Some of you folks know the Verizon channels are 31, 32, and 33. The Comcast channels are 999 and 22. Ted's going to say that again, because some people sometimes don't realize that. We provide education and production experience for kids. We're teaching kids all the time how to use the video equipment, how to make your own show, and anybody can do it. Just become a member and go through some training. We serve, of course, the town, but covering this meeting, covering many other meetings, so that people in their busy lives have a way of finding out what's going on in Reading. Most of you know where we are. Most of you have been there. Right across from Christopher's. All right. And without going through all the, all the names here, some of you know Marcel, who produces a wonderful show about Reading tales. It's made for a great community event. John Carpenter, the vice president, as you know, again, Ted, myself, and everybody knows, or most people know Phil, who is our, we're very lucky to have Phil, is our executive director, and Angela, who's a wonderful second, Luke, who's tremendous technically, and Laura, who's wonderful as a program coordinator as well. So, let's see, membership, volunteers, again, the Reading football story is kind of interesting to me. I filmed some football games, and people would come up to me and said, "You work for the town. When is it on TV?" And you should remember that, again, everybody who's down filming a game at the stadium, they're volunteers for RCTV. They're paying for their membership. They're putting it on. They're producing the entire show. Membership is open to anyone. RCTV, you know, provides equipment, free equipment for everybody. It's wonderful equipment. And again, we sponsor events where members can come, participate, very involved in the community. I'd like now to hand it over to Ted.
Okay. This is a quick, quick view of what you view when you get to www.rctv.org. And the biggest question is, is when is a program going to be on the air? And what you do is you select the programming option on that first screen, and up will pop a little, a little screen, and you can select what you want, what the particular day is and what programs you want to watch. And one of the programs that I produce, you can see it's on at 5:30 in the morning, and it's delicious simplicity. And if you have a little insomnia, you can watch that first thing in the morning. And you can also select videos on the screen, and you can go up to YouTube, and you can see any of these, not any of the, any of the shows, but some of the shows are in fact on YouTube, and they are in high-def out there on YouTube. What I'd like to talk about is PEG, Public Educational and Government. The products that RCTV produces are in those three realms. We have public access, which is member-produced shows, member-requested and supplied videos. You can get that on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon 31. The next operational facet that we have is educational. Now, we can get the school committee meetings or any student-produced videos and member-requested educational shows, and that's on Comcast 99 and Verizon Channel 31. And next is the government shows. Hopefully, everyone knows that they're, right now, they're on Channel 22 or they're on Channel 33, and you're viewing this right now up there. And you have many of the town government shows on that. Now, on the technical realm, right now, RCTV is, is working to improve the media equipment in Town Hall and for the school committee. Equipment should be installed, we're not 100% sure, but it should be installed next week to upgrade the system that we have right now in, in the selectmen's meeting room. So, that should be better viewing, and you should have better sound quality in a couple weeks. And we need town IT support to improve the connection to RCTV, because right now, we can only produce one live show from Town Hall. And hopefully, the selectmen will help us with that. We can only have one show, one, you know, one production. Right now, we're, this is live, and if there were another committee in the next room, you wouldn't be able to view that online. That would go to tape, and it would be shown until later.
We could meet less, I guess. I don't know.
But both shows would be on government anyway, so they'd both compete for the...
Both shows are on government.
They'd both compete for the same time slot, even if you had...
But they would compete for the same time slot. What they would do is they would move the second show probably over to the public access.
What help would you need to get that done?
He doesn't need any help.
We don't. Oh, okay.
Town staff has been waiting.
Oh, okay. We'll, we'll be ready. And you can email requests to town government are being tracked for follow-up and response numbers. I know in the past, we've had a little problem with getting response, but not right now. Things are being tracked better.
I have no idea how to go backward.
Page up.
Page up. Page down.
Page down. Yeah.
I didn't even...
Okay, which page down was?
Here we go. The phone number is 781-944-8888. It's an easy number to remember. If you have to call RCTV, go right to it. And the web is www.rctv.org, and you can send any general questions to the mailbox of Now, we're located, and you can see that Phil Rushwood there is the executive director. His tell, his email address is phil@rctv.org. We're located at 557 Main Street, and the hours of operation now are Tuesday right through to Friday. And in the future, we are going to be open on Mondays, which is going to be good. And Saturdays, we're open from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and close on Sundays and holidays. And a new dedicated email address for town officials to request any coverage is, has been established, and it's called GOV@rctv.org.
Good to know.
And that, and clearly identify any telephone calls that, you know, regarding a government And we have a few frequently asked questions that, right now, RCTV records in HDTV, high-def. But you can't get high-def on channel, any of the channels on Verizon or Comcast, and that's because neither one of them will accept a digital signal. It's all the old analog-type signal. And again, why isn't the schedule on, on the TV guy? Because again, Verizon, Comcast won't accept a schedule from us.
Ted, how about a third-party provider like TiVo? Have you ever talked to them?
We haven't.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would cover a small percent of the... Yeah, I mean, that, that would cover a small percent of the viewership, but there are a number of people that have TiVo-enabled DVRs.
I'll bring that up with Phil, and we'll see what, if that can be done.
I think you can DVR, 'cause I just DVR'd this.
Yeah.
But it, it covers a long span, goes from six to ten.
Oh, yeah, you have to hand-manipulate the times.
Yeah.
I've done that, yeah. But in terms of getting the-
Well, no, you can, you can look at a slot in Verizon, and actually click the button, so it's a little easier, but it is a pain.
Yeah, they may actually have to take their feed from Verizon, so maybe that wouldn't-
That could be, if they take their feed from Verizon or Comcast-
Then you're stuck, yeah.
You're stuck. And one of the frequently asked questions, will RCTV tape my event? And Kevin mentioned that briefly, but basically, become a member, get trained in using the equipment, and you yourself can produce a show. I mean, whether it's a sporting event, or, or a concert, or something like that, you can, in fact, can do that. And, you know, all the, all the board members are invited to join if you're not already a member.
So if somebody out there has a burning interest in government, they could produce the board's Selectmen's meetings.
Well, that's, that's requirement by RCTV, and, no, that's not, not done by, by members of RCTV. Finally, a summary.
I've just gotten them with you the whole time.
No, that's okay. We didn't do the song and dance before. We need help with public awareness, so that, you know, the, you know, people in town will in fact know what RCTV is. A lot of people don't know what RCTV is. And a lot of people have, you know, have a, would like to have an interest in a particular sporting event, or something like that. I mean, if you want hockey, you're gonna have to go up there and, and learn how to run the equipment and tape it. And that's it. And, and you can in fact, you know, contribute content and things like that, and get training. And we need designated points of contact for a more effective two-way communication from us to the town, and from the town to us. We need representatives of Town Hall, the schools, RMLD, and other departments. And that's it. Your input here and everywhere keeps RCTV relevant and useful and current.
I just had a programming question. Is Time Will Tell still being produced? I know Dick was very involved with that show.
Not as yet. I believe that there is going to be a Time Will Tell, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know that Dick, in fact, got two teams ready to do it, and he was actively working on it, and I think he was gonna tape it in, in October.
Yeah.
But I don't know whether someone has picked up the ball. I mean, that's an interesting show.
Yeah, it is. Well, I'm waiting for him to produce another un-retired champion, 'cause I was the member of the team that retired.
I, I know that there are some issues for Reading at large that have yet to be shown that Dick did, did produce, so that I think those will be produced shortly.
That's good.
Do you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Are you interested in more rentals for the meeting room there?
Certainly, absolutely.
One suggestion I have is that you might talk to the library, because their public meeting room is constantly in use, and it's gonna be closed for a while.
It will be, that's a point.
And they could point people in, you know, in your direction.
Oh, yeah.
'Cause your meeting room's fantastic, their meeting room's really fantastic. It's, yeah, your, the RCTV space is very warm and friendly, it's got the kitchen right there, and the big screen and stuff. It's a lot of fun.
Temperature-controlled.
We certainly enjoy having the Selectmen and the Town Manager over as much as possible for some of our events that we're filming over there.
Sure.
It's, you know, it's the whole idea to be able to spread the word to everybody.
Bob was talking about sipping and budgeting, maybe we could-
Yeah, right. Start on October thirtieth. Well, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in.
We have a hearing in six minutes. Should we try to do, out of order, maybe?
Two minutes, maybe.
We don't want the record here.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, move that the board's Selectmen approve the minutes of September ninth, two thousand thirteen, as amended.
Send him over and we'll get him worked-
Discussion.
Minutes that were the, the joint-
Discussion, hearing in, all those in favor?
Yep. Move that the board's Selectmen approve the minutes of September twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, as amended.
And I actually did have some informents to that.
I do, too.
I've actually already sent them over to Paula, but the, on the reports at the beginning, I actually had talked about the FinCom, the trustees, the commissioners of trustees, and also the, the audits committee for RMLD. So I put in notes about all those, as well as, there was a comment about paint and SIP, and I, I just amended that, the comment that was attributed to me. What I said was that I, that, that the Boston location recommends local restaurants, and that I was in favor of doing that, supportive of local restaurants.
On pages five and seven of the September twenty-fourth minutes, when we were discussing the town government reorganization, there was a motion made to consider, and then the motion table is actually four-one-zero. I voted against that motion, not five-zero-zero.
When was that?
Uh, the motion table, the discussion on town government reorganization, on pages five and seven. I'm not sure why it's there twice, but it's there twice.
The motion is there twice?
Well, yeah, the discussion of it, maybe it's because of the way you guys catalog your information.
Okay.
Four-one-zero, not five-zero-zero. That was the one.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes as amended, like you're here, four-zero-zero, and we still have four minutes. Is there anything else we could knock off here? I don't see anything else. Why don't we take a-
If there's one thing we can do, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. I see Judy's here, so we could talk about paint and SIP for five minutes.
Yeah. I have no objection.
None. I included in your packet, and I'll show here on the overhead, some wording from Town Council. I, I do have, and I, I shared with this, this with Judy. The plan presumably is that we'll have a hearing at your next meeting on this to actually formalize this, but just to have a quick discussion now. I had a discussion with, with the Chair, James Bonzoli, and he suggested a couple things, which was choices between two or three hours, and then some wording on whether, how strongly we're gonna require food and what type of food. The one piece of information I just came across late yesterday is that it probably is not legal to restrict the amount of alcohol that's, and despite the fact other towns and cities do that in their SIP, paint and SIP policies, it's the feeling of Town Council and the police chief researched it separately, that that's not something we should do. So when you have your hearing, presuming you do, I'll make sure to have that, I, you know, I have some information on it.
Can there be a side letter of agreement with the licensing?
You can have verbal agreement, but you can't enforce it. It's, it's, again, according to Town Council, it's not something you can enforce.
Yeah, I understand.
You can have any-
The gentle, ladies, gentlemen's agreement.
Yeah, you can have sort of, exactly. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Is that to say you could compel, it's not illegal compelling?
Can't.
You can't. You can't restrict the amount of alcohol to two drinks. Which surprises me, because it's a very common phrase that I found in many policies.
Is it a gray area, Bob, or is it black and white?
Not according to Town Council, it wasn't. But again, this just came out yesterday, so I'd, I'd wanna talk to him. Assuming you go forward with the hearing, I'll give you much better information on that. But I, I think Judy came tonight to have a little more discussion, I'm gonna say probably about the food part, Judy, as to what your preference is, and the board as well.
You know, what the board's leaning towards, you know, some of your thoughts.
I don't know that we've talked about it.
We haven't, yeah.
Ted?
Actually, I was more concerned about how we were gonna define instructional classes as part of the business of the establishment, and that, that, where it says as part of the business of the, of the establishment.
Oh, it need not be the whole of it, could be part of it.
Well, right, but, you know-
As the principle?
And how, how do, I mean, good, 'cause I, you know, I read that, and, you know, it clearly fits what Judy is proposing, which is fine. But I thought, well, what if somebody came before us and said that they wanted to do-
Instructional budget classes.
Well, no, not that, but like dance and SIP.
Yeah.
Right? They, they wanted to, to do dance classes and, you know, play music and serve alcohol at the same time. Would that fit under, under this policy?
Yes. And that's, Town Council's early point was, you can't restrict it to paint.
Yeah.
You know, if you're allowing this activity to occur, you can't be so specific as to only cite one activity's allowed. There's, there's gonna be other activities that are allowed. You can just set some kind of loose parameters. And now, they don't even include how much alcohol, how much time you can, who is allowed, so for instance, class members are, you know, are defined here. And then the definition of what you want for food service is within your purview. But you can't say it can only be paint, it can't be bull, or, you know, whatever the other activity might be.
Can it, can it be-
Instructional classes are the closest you can get to what she's proposing, which fits, and maybe some other activities that wouldn't really qualify there.
Could you be as specific as saying it should be the sole business? Sole and exclusive business?
I'm not sure how you'd define that, because if you looked at revenues and they're selling alcohol-
And food.
It's not, and food, it's not the sole business, quote-unquote.
I think we probably have to talk about this, I mean, I, I see the-
You know, if you wanna proceed with the hearing, you know, we'll advertise it, and I'll invite Town Council in next week.
What's the census of the board?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Ben?
I have a question. By putting all of these specifics, does it make it more complicated than it needs to be? I mean, if somebody came to the town requesting a dance license, wouldn't there be some kind of restrictions for the music, or noise, or other things that might come into play that would cover that, or that would protect, maybe against?
Are you asking, can it be made more restrictive in a way that-
Actually, less, because this is, is, this is like, you're, not a one-time granting, but you're, you're fitting this to this, as long as I, you know, fulfill, you know, all the requirements, and I've come before you, and I've laid out my plan, and you've agreed with the plan, and you've said, okay, you know, it's okay. Whereas if somebody wants to do dance, then you could say, you know, you know, that's not part of it, or it could even fall under other restrictions a town may have already. Plus, you know, for, I don't know, for this to be viable, I mean, it has to, you know, nobody's gonna try to open this, it's not gonna be viable in money making, so I think it's gonna be outrageous for us. But I'm just wondering, you have the power to say yes or no, I think, to any license that comes before you, in a sense.
This is, again, this is after working with Judy, this is Town Council's suggestion, but to be very clear, right now, your policy does not allow anything that she's wanting to do. If you adopt some kind of other policy, you can't look at applicants one at a time and decide to do it or not. You're creating a whole new set of liquor license laws, if you will, or policies. Anyone who can fit within the four corners of that, the language, or whatever language you end up approving, does not need to come in front of you and defend themselves, they have a right to do that. That doesn't mean you couldn't have a discussion with them, and have an argument with them, and all this, but the, and to the end of the day, if they fit in there, they fit in there. And, you know, it's, it's a good point, there's always gray areas, what does instructional classes even mean?
So, so Bob, does that mean that we actually have no ability to define who gets liquor licenses?
You always have to get a liquor license application. You have to see them, they have to come in, they have to present their story. You know, you can lecture them on terms and conditions of having a license, you know, talk about our CASA. But if you allow, by having a new policy, you allow other uses. You know, someone else has every right, as well as Judy does, to do those activities, whatever they are. And that's why I think you really need to, if you have a hearing, you really need to have count, you have to hear from Town Council what I can tell you, what he really needs to tell you, as to whether you can or can't restrict certain activities, and my discussion with him is, you can't.
Well, we have gotten advice from Council in the past, that there are, at least for package store licenses, a couple of bases under which-
Yeah.
-the board could choose not to grant licenses. You know, one would be sort of this broad issue of community need, and the other would be, you know, the, you know, the character of the applicant.
Yes. Those would still certainly be in your purview. But the point is, you can't say paint and SIP is okay, and then anyone else come in front of me and ask. So I, I really think you need Town Council here. I've talked to them, but I think you need to hear what he has to say, to be able to ask any questions.
It feels like we almost need to tighten this up before we can have the intelligent hearing, right?
Yeah.
To the point about what instructional classes mean, let me ask something else silly. What is a beverage? Is it a thirty-two-ounce beverage? Is it a sixty-four-ounce beverage? Right?
Well, I think, again, my point earlier was, you can't restrict it, so I would actually strike that sentence.
Sorry?
I would strike the sentence above, you know, two, maximum two.
It's not known under our purview. It's a bad example to the town council.
Okay.
You get the point, right?
Yeah, and that's-
It's almost like we gotta tighten this up before we can have candidates to talk about it.
Well, again, this is in the broader context of, you know, your liquor license policies and the Selectmen's policies in general. So, you know, there's definitions, I'm sure not every single term is defined. You know, commercial establishments, I do, I do know is defined. And, and really, this is why you need to be, if you want to ask specific questions about definitions of words, you really need Town Council to tell you, I can't tell you.
I guess we need to schedule a session with Town Council.
I would suggest you have a hearing, and hammer it all out at once. You know, we've had the discussion, I'm gonna say, three or four times at least with the board. You know, it's time to make a decision, I would have to say. I think you've got all the information you need. If Town Council's here to answer your questions interactively, then you really will have all the information you're ever gonna have. You know, for the applicant's benefit, I think it needs to be finished.
I'd be okay with that.
So, so I'm, I think that we should go ahead and have the hearing.
I agree.
We have talked about this multiple times. I, I do think that it's probably worthwhile potentially talking about the serve versus provide food, and, and get a sense for which direction the, the board feels like, and I would personally like to know what the applicant is interested in there. And then, that, I think that makes sense to do that.
Yes. Given that we're unable to restrict the amount served, would be appropriate, this should be run by Town Council, and require tips training, would that be happening in any case, or should it be?
It's certainly a good idea, and it's always been a recommendation or a suggestion given by the board.
Right.
Whether it's required or not, I don't know.
Over it's word in the other place.
There's different programs that are offered, so you probably can't be quite that specific.
If we had a hearing, I'm just looking at the calendars.
We're pretty full up until November. I think next, next meeting, we can squeeze it in.
Well, by squeeze, how many minutes, do you think?
Well-
Because again, if you, I mean-
Thirty minutes?
Yeah, that's pretty much-
Is that enough? I think on your next, is your next agenda recreation? I'm not looking at it.
Yeah.
No.
Gudo's on there. Field naming requests for travel.
Merch, minotaur, master plan, dog park opportunities.
I had a discussion with John today, and said, you know, there's a lot going on in the next meeting, I might have to push you out, and he's fine, he doesn't have any time constraints, so that may go away.
All right. I'd have no objection to that. Can we make that happen?
Yeah.
So the other, other thing I'm curious about is, is instructional classes, I felt it's actually kind of a good, you know, it ties it into some, you're, you're doing something else along with this particular activity. So I, I guess my, my question would be, what are the concerns that people think could slip in here in terms of instructional classes that would be problematic for us?
Auto mechanics, you know, it could be something silly that meets the general, I'd be facetious.
Something that would, that would cause, that would not cause harm to the community, or maybe we, we have to add some kind of phrase in there, I don't know.
We could just say no. There's some discretion.
Mr. Chairman, Fred Van Magnus from Franklin Street. One of the things, and would obviously wanna see the final potential policy, but when you start even having things in there that it should be restricted to classes that are not more than two or three hours, there's nothing in there that says somebody couldn't be there for a consecutive class. Somebody could be for, you know, because there's a paint and SIP, instructional class A, and then instructional class B, and they go through four or six hours. A and then instructional class B, and they go through four or six hours. I mean, I guess from my perspective is I just don't understand why we're even doing something like this in the town. And I come from this, I've been here 43 years, and we were a dry town, then we went to package stores, then we went to restaurants where you had to purchase a meal and you could have a beverage as part of the process. Now we've got, you know, somewhat open bars in a lot of our restaurants, and I'm not sure how much policing is going on about people going in there and having a drink and then going and actually having food. But I just keep thinking about, you know, what, I know, and I understand that the applicant is a business and all the rest of them are trying to foster business, but I'm not sure that this is something this community really needs to be doing. So I, you know, I welcome the hearing and obviously, I would hope to have the opportunity to put written comments in.
Certainly.
At that time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
So we should, just quick show of hands, all in favor of the hearing?
It's not soon.
We'll go ahead and do that.
I have one other comment that I still, I'm not opposed to entertaining food. And then, would it simplify it just going under, you know, the restaurant beer and wine license, and then there isn't?
It's a much more straightforward process.
It certainly would simplify things.
Well, it would simplify it, and, you know, I have somebody on board who is familiar with food, who's, you know, familiar with serving food, you know, to the public, so that's why I'm also, I'm open to entertaining that too, which, you know, if that's what it has to be.
It's probably a faster path.
It'd be more simplistic, because it'd have to be very regimented, in a sense, you know, you're not going to be serving throughout the night, you know, it kind of would be, whatever, you know, we would figure out those logistics, but we could make that part of the experience, I think. I don't think it'd be very profitable, but I think we can make it a part of the experience also. And I'm not closing that door, in a sense, to make this happen.
So that's a secondary path, we'll have the hearing and see where that goes, and you always have the license, or excuse me, the opportunity with existing policy.
Judy, I'll be in touch with you as to what time. There's two items on there that one of them's going to drop out.
Okay.
I'm going to say it's probably going to be around 8:30.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're running 15 minutes late. We have a hearing, liquor license transfer, change of location, Wine Bunker.
To the inhabitants of the town of Reading, please take notice that the board's selectmen of the town of Reading will hold a public hearing on October 8th, 2013, at 8:00 p.m. in Selectmen's Meeting Room 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on the transfer of package store liquor license from CWI Limited, doing business as The Wine Bunker, to Kajal and Kevin LLC, doing business as Liquor Junction, at a new location within the same plaza at One General Way. A copy of the proposed document regarding this topic is available in the Town Manager's Office, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Mass., Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Tuesday from 7:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and is attached to the hearing notice on the website at www writtingma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 6:00 p.m. on October 8th, 2013, to tanmanager@ci writtingma.us.
Is there anyone here to represent the applicant tonight?
Yes.
And if the applicant would like to come forward as well, as well as council?
If I could just introduce, just so the board and the public has a visual of this, the Wine Bunker presently, this is down One General Way, Danus Properties, Market Basket, right here. Wine Bunker is currently in this location. Jody, as I understand it, the proposal is approximately in this area?
Yes.
Okay. So there's, there's someone from Danus, you know, if you have any questions, and then the applicant's in front of you, I just wanted to give you that background.
So the former, the former location's closing as a matter of?
Just moving.
Just moving.
And then license change request.
Your formal proposal?
Yes, we've submitted two applications, one for a change of DBA and one for a change of location and a transfer of license.
I've reviewed the material, I've got some questions, but I'll open it up to the board if they have any questions. Hearing none. I had some, in the review that the Reading Police did, I see that both the applicants have one or more instances of compliance check violations.
So, there, so there are two, you're referring to Komal Patel and Jasmine Patel?
Yes, I have a letter signed by our chief of police, it details a recent history.
Ms. Patel, Jasmine Patel, that is, owns a store in Londonberry. There was a single violation there since the time that she opened it, two and a half years ago. That violation happened when a trainee, who was a brand-new hire, who they were in the process of training to be a cashier, checked an ID, misread the birth date, and he was terminated immediately after that. They handled it very quickly, and that was the sole incident that they've ever had at that store, again, in over two and a half years.
It describes an earlier event that was not cited but recorded. In 2004, it records an event where the same location was not cited but had an instance of sale of an underage buyer.
Sir, they did not own the store in 2004?
Okay. Okay.
Okay. And with respect to Komal Patel, she is, she's, just like in this proposed store, she is simply an investor in the other store, she never works there, she has a full-time job in a separate field. She's only an investor, she does not, she's not a manager, she's not an employee, she's had nothing to do with the operations of that store day-to-day, including any violations.
This describes that there were citations, again, I don't know the ownership transition, but in 2005, 2008, 2009, 2010, and again in 2011, which of those would have been under her ownership?
Since 2007.
So all but the 2005, so four instances of the five that are recorded here.
Again, she's not, she's not in that store, she's simply an investor, she put, you know, money, investment money into it, she does not work there.
And she has ownership, yeah?
She does have ownership.
That conveys some responsibilities, right, of ownership.
Sure.
The other, that's one area I had a question of, the other was, Ben, you may remember, I seem to recollect when the Wine Bunker went in, we had a long discussion, it may have been before my time, and I may have been in the audience, but that the Wine Bunker was a, was a wine and beer only, and principally internet-type business. It was constructed around a?
At the request of the licensee.
Well, but if I can refresh you on the history, we, it was a period of time when we had one package store license left and we had two applicants for it. One was a very large establishment called Wine Nation, which was applying for the location of what used to be Lindens and Things, it's that golf store now, and what became the Wine Bunker, so, you know, at that same location, so that there were two proposals. The board voted not to grant a package store license to either. After a period of time, maybe a year, the Wine Bunker came back with a scaled-back proposal, to sell wine and basically nothing else. You know, it was, their idea was basically sell wine by the case, and, you know, so they were trying to reach a certain market niche, and they agreed to various kinds of restrictions, including the size of the retail establishment, you know, in, in order to receive that license. On a 3-2 vote, they were granted the license for that location with those restrictions.
Do I just remember that it was also primarily around the notion of internet sales?
That was the representation, I don't think that was actually what happened. I had produced minutes, two, three sets of minutes, a few meetings ago, as background before Jody and George came in, you know, and that was my recollection, and that was in the minutes, that it was represented as primarily an internet sales-driven business. For whatever reason, that never took off or never materialized the way the applicant netted vision.
So is it, the issue before is the transfer of that license with those restrictions?
Yes, that's the question, is, just to get the context, because that isn't provided in the package in front of us.
Right.
Yeah, the license you've issued has those restrictions, and that, those restrictions carry forward unless the board changes them.
And there's no request for relief from any of those?
I haven't heard of any, don't.
Well, but the application today is for a full package store, if I read the document correctly.
Well, the last, the wording was, I think no nips was one of the things. I don't think it was an all, a beer and wine license only. I think there were other restrictions. Was it beer and?
All alcohol, we don't have all alcohol.
Yeah, it was all alcohol, but there were certain restrictions within that. And that's what the application is in front of you, again, it's all alcohol, and the presumption as the conditions on this license and this location are with those restrictions, so many square feet, certain kinds of beverages allowed or not allowed. You're right that this was voluntarily put forth by a prior applicant.
Where in this application is the, is the same language inherited from the?
They wouldn't put that in the application, that's in your, in your granting of a license with conditions.
So unless we reflect back on the incumbent and realize how that was issued, we don't have a means to impress it here, it sounds like. It's not something that's inherited.
You're transferring the license, so it exists and it's exist in its full form with conditions.
I wonder if you missed, there was actually a meeting that we discussed pretty extensively what the constraints were, and a lot of the constraints actually didn't seem to make a lot of sense. There were things about number of coolers, and there were different things that, that seemed restrictive for not necessarily a good end result. The no nips makes a lot of sense to me, but some of the other things didn't necessarily seem realistic. I think that you perhaps missed that, we had a pretty extensive discussion around.
That explains the gap.
So.
Yeah, that would have been the July meeting that I wasn't at.
And I thought that we had essentially talked about really not letting it revert back to a standard all liquor, with the exception of perhaps leaving the no nips in there, which I think is not something that we necessarily need to be collaborating in our community.
I'm a little confused as to exactly what we're approving here, if we approve it.
Well, if you approve the transfer as requested, then you approve with the existing conditions on it.
Totally.
You have to go out of your way to change those conditions, which can be done at a later date, it can be done tonight, it can be done at a later date.
If I may, we would ask that those restrictions be lifted, particularly with respect to the square footage restriction, as this, this proposed location would have 7,200 square feet, which I believe is, is larger, is larger than the past store.
It's the same, but we would be looking for the retail space to increase from like the D2 to 67.
So it's an increase in the retail space?
Right.
From, I'm sorry, what was the lower number?
I believe it's 52 currently, as far as the retail space, but the space itself is going to be the same as the new location, but.
The same overall square footage with just a larger retail space as compared to the backroom storage space.
And that's why there was the, the restriction on the coolers and such was, it was a way of getting to the calculation for the, the amount of square footage that the board would allow. Because again, the basic context was, was the concern with the size of the establishment versus sort of all the other package store licensees and?
I think before I can vote on this, the motion will have to contain all the exceptions to the conditions. So at this point, I'm of a mind to continue the hearing.
Yeah, I think we would need to know exactly what, I think we do need to be very clear about exactly what's in it.
Historically, we've always had it.
Well, and it sounds like the applicants also need to be very clear on exactly what's in it, as well.
Yeah. I have, I have the formerly issued license with all the restrictions.
Right.
I don't know if you have this?
We have it.
Want me to go run off some copies of what he has, or, it's up to you whether, you know, the applicant didn't request anything different than a transfer?
Well, our understanding was that it was for the, a new section 15, I understand it's a transfer, but I believe in our experience, it's typically transferred without restriction.
Sounds like there's some homework to be done, Stan.
I think we're misaligned.
Yeah.
I can't prove something we, we're not.
I'm happy to provide this to you.
Plain language, we have it, it's in our package.
I think what I prefer to have is a statement of what was originally approved, whenever it was approved, this package, and then we can do a comparison and understand what you're proposing and how it may be a variance with the current Wine Bunker, it may be a triviality, it may be material.
Right.
Are you suggesting there are particular restrictions that are trivial as opposed to material, and if so, can I ask?
No, but, no, but a difference of the way the space is shaped, or what you want to put in retail, there may be some tolerance on the board to allow somewhat greater or lesser retail space while leaving the net gross base constant. To the degree that there were intentional language put in the prior document, we need to comprehend that, why that was put there, and then understand how that impacts you, this application going forward.
Okay. And how is it that we will learn how the prior, why the prior restrictions were put into place?
I suppose we could look at the minutes to understand the dialogue that led to the restrictions being put in place the first time. Some of the members of the board were, are still here, at least two of them were here at the time.
One of them is not here tonight, though.
He's not here tonight, but two are here.
Yeah, I can certainly send you all that in advance of the hearing if it's continued.
And Bob, if possible, if we could arrange to have council here at the same time, so maybe he can give us?
You're doing paint and sip.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking.
Give us on 22nd?
Maybe he can give us some guidance as to, you know, from our perspective, how the restrictions work or don't work with respect to granting a license.
Yeah, and I'll make sure in advance you get all the material that you need to see, so you're prepared.
Thank you, that'd be great.
I'm not sure how to proceed forward.
Just leave the hearing open.
Yeah, so I move to continue the hearing on the transfer of the package store license from CWILTD DBA, The Wine Bunker, to Kajal and Kevin LLC DBA Liquor Junction at One General Way until October 22nd, meeting of the board of selectmen.
Maybe we should ask if it would, if that date would be convenient for the applicants?
That's our next meeting.
I'd say somewhere in the eight to nine o'clock range.
Yeah, I think, I think that will work. I have a deposition at five, actually, but it should be quick, so I think, I think we could be here.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Zero.
One final question, if I may?
Sure.
I have with me the affidavit of notice to the abudders and the associated paperwork. Shall I give that to you now?
Yeah, it's good to put it on the record.
And I presume we do not need to re-notice?
No.
No.
Not if it's continued, no.
Thank you.
Shall I get in touch with you through Jody? Is that the easiest way? Okay.
If I may, just a reminder, we did come back in July, and I think those minutes were helpful because we did discuss easing some of the restrictions, and we have a history as well, if you need any information.
Okay, great.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a Reading Ice Arena Authority report. Is anyone here tonight?
Yeah, Carl.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Carl, Ben, I'm here representing the Ice Rink, and never been before you, but now that Bob and I have some nice time together down at the Ice Rink, I thought it was certainly appropriate that you come in and give you, since there are some new members on the board, somewhere the historical, but also what's going on there now. As I mentioned, a couple weeks ago, Bob, Ed Pidudo, who's been rink director since day one, and I, we went, took a tour of the facility, Bob learned everything about Ice Rink and how ice freezes at 32 degrees and all that funny stuff, and?
And he wasn't dressed appropriately.
Did he get to drive the airplane?
No, not at all. Some things have come up because how originally the Ice Rink was set up by Mr. Burbank, Nelson Burbank, back in 94, was his goal all along was for it not to be a white elephant to the community, where it would end up during difficult times, and to be honest, if you look around to state-run ice rinks, just look at Stonem as an example, it's a disaster, well, was a disaster during difficult times. And to be honest, if you look around to state-run ice rinks, just look at Stonem as an example, it's a disaster, well, was a disaster, um, during difficult times economically, usually the rink is the first thing to get cut. And that's certainly something that Nelson did not want to have happen for the community. The other thing that was that it was, is designed more as a community rink versus a commercial enterprise. That's why if you've ever been down there, you don't see the hockey boards with all the different advertising on there because much like, um, the new school board down at, um, the high school field, you guys restrict no advertising on it because you want to maintain the sense of community. And that mission, that philosophy has been maintained, um, under, really the, the direction of the board that's been maintained as well as Ed Bedudto. Ed has, as I mentioned, been there since day one. Nelson recruited him from actually the Zamboni family, um, back out in California and brought him all the way back. Management is extremely stable there, Ed knows everything about it, um, does a lot of community stuff. Is, is, does a lot of what the neighbors wear. Believe it or not, sometimes kids go down there at night and may drop a can or something like that in neighbor's lawn. And Ed's very proactive in making sure that, that, uh, street is very well maintained. Some of the economics aspect of it, it's almost up to two million dollars of direct contributions from the ice rink to, um, the town. Cash on cash, as Nelson. When Nelson and I and Bob met, Nelson had his notes from nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four referencing everything that's there. One of the things that did come up that, um, you never really, uh, quantified, but we have since then, was the school system gets a discount on ice time versus if they had to go to a Stonem rink as an example. It's almost ten thousand dollars a year, and we're coming up on twenty years. So the school system has had an indirect benefit, um, of almost two hundred thousand dollars, which is, you know, pretty substantial. That has never been really added into the equation. Bob pointed that out to us in the, in the meeting also. Couple of years ago, there was a Title IX issue that arose because the girls' hockey team was starting up and growing. And, um, some people had brought up the fact that the boys locker room, obviously Title IX, the girls have to have the same type of locker room. And the long and the short of it, the girls do have, uh, an locker, a locker room that's equivalent to the, um, boys locker room. Bob has seen it.
Better than.
It's actually, it is really nice. Uh, but it costs three hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was paid out of the reserve fund. The reserve fund typically is quarter of a million to three hundred thousand dollars always maintained in there. And the, the agreement, the reserve has to be at a certain level, and then everything over that would end up going directly to the town. The last thing, the, the philosophy that Nelson had when it was set up was if something ever happens, the roof needs to be replaced or something like that, doesn't want to be coming in front of you guys looking for money or town meeting and et cetera. So we've always had a healthy reserve, which is, you know, good business practice, shall we say. The board has a very proactive approach towards capital items from, you know, the boards, the bleachers, the equipment. The biggest thing that's on the horizon, shall we say, is, and these are not something that, one is most likely going to happen, and the other thing is definitely going to happen, is the most likely is in about two to three years, the franks are going from more of a gas-operated Zamboni to electric for obvious reasons. But that would be a cost of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars-ish. That, the plan would be to fund that through the cap, um, the reserve account, excuse me. And then on the, I recall the compressor, the boilers, they're anticipating eight to ten years. It's the life expectancy, when it would be starting to need to be replaced, usually you get about thirty years, which eight to ten years from now would be in that timeline. That's a much more expensive thing, somewhere in the, you know, couple of hundred thousand dollar, um, range, I would say. All these expenses are planned to be paid through the reserve fund, reserve account that's been built up over that. Some of the additional things is John Feuto, um, your rec director, our rec director, uh, really wants to start adding on some additional programs to see what can fit. Those are discussions that are starting up. John's looking for more space for, for other reasons too, and, you know, we're trying to figure out if there's anything that can be done down there. Some of the other things, obviously, everyone knows about New Year's Eve party that they do with the, um, to the town at six o'clock with the kids, open to the public. Does a lot of community skate, so the public's able to use it, it's not like it's a restricted environment whatsoever. Those are really the, the macro approaches down there. I just wanted to give you an update, as well as get any feedback, if there's anything that you've heard within the community, like we'd like to have this going on or that I can see if we can facilitate, um, things to make it even better than it is now.
And board members have any questions? Carl, I had a question regards, there was a discussion about putting a cell tower up on or about the, the location. Would that be managed by the Reading Ice Authority?
That would, um, from my understanding is that Bob would be working with legal counsel to find out kind of, because it's, it's a quasi-type of relationship where who has complete control and.
We, we own the thing, they're running it. We haven't researched it thoroughly because the demand side is, is a little slow, um, in terms of Verizon Wireless. Town council suggested amending the agreement we have with the Ice Arena Authority, just to make it clear that it's allowed as opposed to letting there be any gray areas. And we'll have a discussion with their board. Again, town council said, I see absolutely no detrimental impact on the operation, but it's just better legally to have it in an agreement. And just as a side note, um, one of the reasons I wanted Carl to come in, and I, I do appreciate the meetings he set up, it was very helpful for me to get some of the history, which I really didn't know all of. It's one thing to see it, it's another to understand kind of the background. I especially appreciate the fact that he found the reverse gear very quickly as we're in the long range.
Yes.
And there was live fire going on when he was showing me the gun club.
We were taking a tour, we moved up behind the gun club there and, yeah, we moved quick.
That would have been a bad headline, Carl. Something else that came up at a recent meeting with, um, our MLD was our facilities department does not have the Ice Arena building on their radar scope at all. They do nothing with it. So when they were talking about solar power, for instance, it never crossed their mind that, oh, there's another asset in town we could use, and that would seem to be an opportunity. So it's just good for us to remember that the Ice Arena Authority exists. They do a great job. I nor Peter have ever got a complaint from any neighbor, which is remarkable. And that really speaks a lot to how Ed conducts his business down there. He knows all the neighbors, he's a really good neighbor. We're really very lucky to have the whole entity in the operation, I think.
So Carl, I do have a question on the financials. Do they, do they publish annual financial information and, and that's available?
I apologize, yeah, we have audited financials and they get, they work hand in hand with the town account.
Yeah, we get them every year.
They, they, they go through all the debits and credits and all that exciting stuff. And, um, I believe that all that stuff is public, anyone wants to see. It's, it's a very simple operation.
It, it's very basic, even more basic than our CTV's financials, which I gave you a summary of tonight.
For expenditures like the compressor and, uh, things like that, would you tend to get a head start in your reserves? Or would you tend to wait and then?
They've built up reserves for that reason, yeah.
We have, we have strong reserves and how, how the agreement is structured is that there's no set amount in terms of, you know, it's got to be X every single year. It's, all right, we don't expect any huge expenditures coming down, we have an excess hundred thousand dollars. We're still going to maintain a certain level of reserves, we're gonna, you know, write a check, shall we say. Knowing that, you know, and again, these are decisions in terms of Zamboni, and they can maintain the same exact one that we have now, but I think there's a lot of air quality, just, the air quality's fine, I just want to put that out. Ed would be killing me if I, if I didn't suggest otherwise. It's just that.
Would be better.
Be more efficient and, you know, the carbon dioxide, all those types of things that where it's the right thing to do from a business standpoint.
Any other question?
Thank you.
And one side note, Mr. Burbank would be more than happy if you ever wanted to have a, a background more thorough, shall we say, of every single thing that took place leading up to it.
It's an interesting story.
Yes, it is a very interesting story. James got a nice lesson, shall we say.
My son did his fourth grade, uh, one of his book reports on Zamboni, which he went down to, he did go down to the Reading Ice Arena. I'm sure it was Ed that walked him around, I think he spent like two hours with him.
Ed lives there, I would say.
Probably four people that are interested in the subject.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But thank you, and if you need anything, please go ahead and take.
Okay, um, next on our agenda is, um, discussion on the Auburn Street Water Tank, a project update. George? It's kind of a nice segue from Verizon Wireless into Verizon Wireless.
And others.
And others, yes. As background, George will give you some of the details and the reasons, but, um, I wanted George to come in tonight and just specifically talk about this issue, which is something you're going to see as part of the November town meeting budget amendments. And it's a big enough issue that I thought it deserved its own attention even for five or ten minutes.
Well, basically, as you know, in the previous year's capital budget, we had five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, um, make improvements to the water tower. The plan work at that time was to do some interior structural repairs to the roof and some other miscellaneous components, do some interior painting, uh, do a complete interior painting, I should say. Exterior spot repairs and install a chemical mixer that would, um, help with our water age and chlorine levels. All the plans and the draft plans and specifications were complete and, you know, while these were all going on and we were having some conversations and some let us, uh, letter campaign with some cell companies. When the, our consultant did a more detailed study than our just annual inspections of the tank, they noticed of, they determined that, uh, along the catwalk and the legs going up and the access, uh, the access ladder, there were accessibility and safety issues with some of the cables along the walkway, supporting equipment that the cell companies installed on the towers that actually completely blocked the walkway. There was no way to get around except you could climb over them or climb outside the railing. Where they ran the cables up through the walkway, they cut holes in the walkway. And in the manner that, uh, some of the, between those holes in the catwalk and the way, the manner of what some of the cables were attached to the lake, they really questioned, you know, whether they damaged the structural integrity of the tank. So we had an additional meeting with the cell company and the, our consultant proposed a, a new method of attaching all the cables and whatnot to their cell tower, I mean, to the water tank. And they said they'd look into it. One of the reasons we, the other, one of the other, one of the other reasons we wanted the company to look at it is our contracts with the cell companies are very poorly written. They're completely one hundred percent, I should say two hundred percent in favor of the cell companies, minus ten percent in favor of the town. The only thing that's in there is that if we have to do some maintenance on the tank and their equipment has to come off, they need a year advance notice and they're only required to do that twice. We've already asked them to do it once, so unless we have a complete agreement on the new contract, this is the last time we could ask them to do this work. It does require them to completely remove, it, it does go as far as saying that we can ask them to completely remove it and set up temporary facilities, um, since there's now four companies up there, subsidiaries of others. Their comment that we kept getting back from them that, well, there's no room on the site to install what they call cows, which is a temporary pole to mount their arrays. So what they were proposing, it was just to take down sections or turn off sections of arrays at a time, and we can work around them. Ten, fifteen-foot wide strips, that's it. And it says, oh, and by the way, you can't get too close to the side and you definitely can't get in front of these arrays. So we had, uh, our consultant, which had worked on other towers, they, they devised a new support method for all the arrays and cables. So that basically they're out of our way for, forever. We can paint our tank or do maintenance on our tank anytime we want and not even have to affect the cell companies. They'll never have to go in and relocate their equipment again. It's cost that we wanted them to pick up. They said they were, they'd be willing to participate in some improvements for the tank, but their comment was, we're only going to limit ourselves, we're only limit our exposure to what we have to do to relocate. In other words, nothing. To compound the issue between the structure, every time we do a spot repair on the inside, we have to touch up the paint on the outside. Now, there's additional areas on the outside of the tank that we were going to have to touch up, not just from normal wear and tear, but also because of how some of these connectors, connectors went on the tank. I don't know if you know the water tower in Beverly, it's plain painted orange and white, it's in the flight path to Beverly Airport. And when I built that, it was known as the preen of dog chow, uh, tower. Because it's orange and white. This one here, I guarantee by the time we were through, if we only paint, did the spot repairs on the outside, would be known as the leopard tank. There'd be so many different, uh, splotches of blue paint on the outside, it would look horrendous. So we had the consultant look at what it would cost to increase the project, to completely, uh, paint the exterior of the tank. Also looked in the evaluate, uh, had him evaluate what it would cost for the structural design to do these added improvements to the cell company, so we don't have to worry about them again, and they don't have to worry about us again. The, and, and obviously to address all the stra, uh, safety issues and structural license, we would basically want the cell companies to pay for a full structural evaluation of what their equipment is doing on our structural integrity of the tank. We don't want to pay for it, we want them to pay for it. The basic repainting of the exterior tank and the added design work, one of the problems since you have, there, there's a fairly high contingency on this fifteen percent over the overall project, which comes out to about ninety-one thousand of this added cost. And that's primarily because when you get to painting on the exterior tank and there's so many different cell company connections, there's a lot of unknown, uh, inspections that would be required of the consultants, so there's a high contingency there. But basically what we're looking at now is to go back in the fall and increase our five hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost to a seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar project rounded off. It actually came out to seventy-eight. We, you know, we go in the fall town meeting, we're planning on a winter bid, uh, and which would, if approved and everything, would be a spring, summer construction, mainly because you can't paint in the cold weather, you have to have sixty-degree weather. We will be having another meeting with cell companies before the end of the month. They're going to get all the analysis of what the detailed cost of what their structural, um, design would have to, what would cost in their structural improvements, which is estimated at about three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. We're not going to pay for it, we want them to pay for it, we want them to do it. If they don't, if they're not willing to do it, we're just going to tell them, look, we got to paint the outside of our tank, you have to be completely one hundred percent off the tank. We don't care how you set up the temporary facilities. Now, we can make it easy for them, if they're willing to, um, contribute. We can require the contractor to put up exterior staging. When you paint a tanks, paint, tank, some painters will actually just do it by rigging and hanging all, by scaffolding and everything. Other times, uh, what they've done in the past with other, with other, uh, assist on the cell companies, they actually set up staging around the entire exterior of the tank and design the staging to support their equipment. So then they could mount their equipment to the outside of the staging, and then we can do our work and, and, um, accommodate them that way. But I'm not going to go for the added costs of staging if they're not willing to play some role and contribute some cost and some payment to this. So we'll know more by, by the end of the month of when, uh, after we have the meeting and see what they come back with. But that's what the delay is and that's why our costs are increased.
Any questions?
Sure, I have a couple myself.
Did you?
Yeah, I want to know if there's, I don't know if I want to say this, an open session, but legal recourse here?
That's an interesting question.
Well, you know, it's, it's hard because the last amendment, and I don't want to put the blame on anyone. You know, the last amendment, staff had recommend, the last amendment to one of the contracts, when there was some additional work that was going up, staff had strongly recommended they do a structural analysis of the loading of, of their equipment on our tank. They came back with a structural analysis of, um, basically design of their connections, but not how it affects our tank. We said it was inadequate, it wasn't the correct thing, however, the extension and added equipment was allowed by town. So we asked for the information, but we didn't give, give it, but we gave them the permit anyways. So I, I, you know, I'm not attorney, but would have to ask town council, I, I don't know what the legal ramifications are. You know, they, they do say in the.
How long is our contract?
Pardon me?
How long is the, the current contract?
Is it ten, ten years or is it longer?
Sparring what?
I don't recall.
I'm probably thinking of the Ice Arena or RCTV. Molly's looking, just to update the board, Verizon Wireless has been in touch also on this side in addition to the Ice Arena. And they want to put up twelve antennas on the water tank. I, I bought us a one-year reprieve because of this project, but they're still very interested. You know, and whether twelve is supportable in that location or not, um, for those of you that have Verizon Wireless, there is a. for those of you that have Verizon Wireless, there is a gap in coverage that is needed. Any future contracts will not be 200% minus 10%. If they want to come in, we'll deal with them appropriately.
And we'll be inviting Verizon to the meeting also, even though they're not on the tank yet. This one, this one contract right here, and they're all very similar, there's not really a lot of difference. This is AT&amp;T's wireless PCS doing business AT&amp;T. They're five renewal periods, three renewal periods of five years each, so say 20-year contract.
George, you mentioned a couple things, you mentioned damage, you mentioned interference, where the equipment is in the way of the catwalk or ladders. You mentioned where, and all of those are consequential to somebody else putting their equipment on the, on our tower. Notwithstanding our permit, isn't there a basis for us to say, look, it wasn't there before, this box in the way, it wasn't there, move it?
Well, it's hard to say, because all these contracts, and we finally get all the design contracts, I mean, we, you know, we didn't have them downstairs, so we did get that furnished from the cell companies. All the contracts say in accordance with the drawings. Well, the drawings show a cable coming up here, or they show a box that labeled equipment. And they're in the correct location, it's just that they don't say how the cable goes from the bottom of the catwalk to the top of the catwalk, or how box, how big the box is. So it's in the location of how they, it's generally shown how they were going to put it through there, but they didn't really show in fine detail how it's going to be done. So that's, that's a vague area we'd have to have town council look at.
It strikes me that, you know, we can certainly renegotiate these, but to the extent that they created a nuisance, we ought to just hang in there and say, move it.
I agree, and we, you know, we did have, you know, we did have an incident up there last week, Peter? Last week that one of the technicians from one of the cell companies, I don't know. Now, it was, you know, whether it was a result of any of these things, we don't believe, but he was, our access hatch is elevated up by 15, 20 feet. And to get to the access hatch, which has the ladder to get up to the tank, you access that through a ladder and there's a hatch on the bottom. Well, as he opened the hatch, he fell off the ladder and fell on the ground, he had to get rushed to the hospital. Now, you know, that could happen up in a catwalk someplace.
They have no fall protection?
Well, we don't know all, we don't know all the particulars, we weren't there. It's something that they, you know, obviously should have had fall protection. But for some reason, something happened that, that, you know, someone did get hurt. You know, and I look at it this way, that, you know, you have all these obstacles there that are a direct result of their equipment. Well, you know, I think that increased our liability on that tank, too.
Where my head would be at would be, first of all, position ourselves to renegotiate the contracts, but also in the context of the current ones, understand and demonstrate that they've created the, either a nuisance or a barrier, are enjoying and making good use of. I mean, it can't be, to your point, 210%. You can't mount something in the middle of a catwalk.
Right.
All right, any other questions, Thomas? Just one other comment that, just so you're clear about how the town meeting will look. Presuming this goes forward, their request will be for $720,000, because the $550,000 went back to reserves at the end of the previous year. So just optics, that's how it's going to look. So water reserves now are 2.1 million or some huge amount. And we'll give you all that when you're voting on Warren articles.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
You're welcome. Who's going first, Christine or Ryan?
Open field, how about Franklin and Main first?
Well, my, a lot of mine are all in one slide, so I can do Franklin. I mean Franklin and Main I can do off the top of my head. I mean, as you know, there was a lot of promises by the state to look at doing some interim solutions and also long-term. The, one of the problems was the, with the short-term solutions was that there had to be a meeting established to find out where some, the funding was going to come in, because it was going to need, besides painting, money for signs and possible some equipment changes in the control area for the signal heads. Fred, you can correct me, but as far as everything we've got from the state, if there was an internal meeting, we don't know about it. So we don't know where the short-term solutions are. Long-term, on the, on the, on the more positive sign, even though I'm sure we don't look at as being positive, because none of the short-term solutions have been decided yet, the fact that they had the safety audit is actually a, you know, a step, is the first step in going towards doing some major intersection work for redesigning the whole intersection. That is the first step in the new MassDOT program. And I'll lead into the Hopkins one, because it just ties right in. If you recall, we petitioned the state for, to look at the Hopkins-Main Street intersection. I'll throw the slide up anyways, because it's on here. And we, they agreed it was a high-hazard intersection. They had the safety audit last April. I talked to Bayside Engineering, one of the state consultants working on that. They actually just, in the process of completing the 25% designs plans, and we submitting it to MassDOT next week or two. From there, after MassDOT re, comments go back in the, in the consultant addresses the comments, then they'll get the authorization to proceed to 75, and then we go on to build the project. It goes under the tip program, but high-hazard intersections have a funding level every year. So, and it rates fairly high across the state, so this, this one of the Main and Hopkins will actually get built fairly soon. And I say fairly soon, in a few years, but it's not like a 20-year, 15-year project like the Main Street, West Street one. But Franklin and Main, you know, I say the only positive is that they had the RSA yesterday. But there was still, I mean, I wasn't able to make the meeting, but my understanding is that there was, there was no positive indication of when any of this short-term improvements made.
Positive indication was when one of our legislators asked me whose head should roll. And I told him, so we'll get some help.
To George, your question about funding, this is funding to have somebody go out and actually make the short-term containment-type improvement?
No, this was funding to figure, find out if where some of the, where the maintenance money that MassDOT would need to do these improvements, where it would come through, one of their accounts.
They said on Monday, I know you weren't there, they have identified funding. It's the priority of what projects go next that is now the issue. And it's within District 4. So just to send somebody out to do re-timing or make some-
Well, there's new equipment that's needed too, so it takes, it's not just going in and changing the timings of the, on the clock and painting some, you know, some three cent per foot striping, it's more involved than that.
But it did seem like the dedicated left-hand turn lane was the good short-term solution that we had previously discussed.
Just to give you an example, we threw the, when we installed the doghouse up here to make the left-hand turn at the end of Lowell Street, the first quote I had from one of the traffic controller companies was $12,000. I had it done for seven. But that's only one left turn, and we didn't have to re-stripe anything. And we didn't have to do any equipment change, because all the equipment was some of the brand-new equipment and some of the latest equipment, and it was easy, easy to just re-time the controller. The controller at Main Street is significantly older and on the older ones, you have to upgrade the computers on.
Any other questions?
Any comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Unfortunately, I was not able to make most of the meeting yesterday, but I snuck in at the last moment. I guess the issue is that we've been waiting for MassDOT Division 4 for now probably close to 12 weeks to have a meeting on funding. It just doesn't seem to happen. And I think, you know, I've obviously had some discussions with George and Bob, and it does appear that it's a state-on-state issue. It's that type of a situation. But the problem that we have is that if we don't get something resolved at some point, we're now going to be looking at next spring maybe, before any of this thing takes place. We're going to have this situation continue with high accident rates at that intersection. So I guess the question I have is, it's twofold. One is the short-term things, which we really want to get done. The second thing is to get a crosswalk between the RMP gas station and the Dandy Lions property, because there's a lot of children and adults even that cross there, and there's no crosswalk. There's no way to get to that property anywhere with a crosswalk.
One of the points raised on that, Fred, is that they cannot legally connect a crosswalk to non-sidewalk areas, which I think characterizes what's on the Dandelion side right now. So they can see if they can work something out.
They said they were going to try and work something out of that.
Yeah, you'd be there for that.
But yeah, I guess the question is though, how do we, how do we energize somebody, whether it's Representative Jones or whomever, to actually have a session with, is it Mr. Keating, Paul Keating, or whoever the new guy, Paul Stebbin, who's the new director down there? How do we get that done? And that's really where we're at right now. Whether that's a letter from, from Bob, or a phone call, or something from the selectmen or not, but I think we're kind of at that point. And Bob, I don't know what your plan is there.
I talked to Representative Jones yesterday. You know, we all listened, we understood sort of the lay of the land. And it does seem like, you know, we just need some legislative help, District 4, it's not complicated. Now, where it goes from there, none of us know, but until we expend that effort, we won't know.
We just need to make the noise.
Representative Jones did attend the site, he was there.
Mr. Chairman, I would add on the crosswalks, I don't know how many recall, Ben may recall, Fred may too. There was a CTPS study that was done on the Franklin-Main Street intersection two, three years ago. And they recommended some short-term improvements and long-term improvements. And one of the issues they looked at was crosswalks. And it was a detailed evaluation of the intersection, but at that time there, they thought, because of the limited room, layout room, I think, where we need to put these crosswalks. Because any crosswalk you put in now has to meet the new handicap standards and whatnot. They're probably, it could possibly require land takings in order to get them in. Now, that's not a defying answer, but it's a possibility that that exists. And if that is the case, that obviously is going to eliminate that as a short-term solution.
So you can't even use a containment method if it's not compliant, even if you intend to do a more compliant method later?
Correct. If you, if you touch a crosswalk, if you trust, touch an intersection, technically the way the law is, if we, if, like on our local roads, if we work on one corner of the intersection, we have to make all four corners handicap accessible. So the required regulations.
And do we know, as we stand today, whether that's a requirement, the-
Yeah. Now, since some of these people that make these regulations are at MassDOT, are very closely related with the state, I mean, they do get waivers and everything, but when we go, when we do any work in intersection, we do one corner, we have to get all four.
What's interesting is you watch somebody with a motorized wheelchair come from either, you know, presumably Alderbury Lane or whatever to go for an ice cream cone. That's an interesting process to see them try and dodge through the traffic and get across that roadway.
Are there even curb cuts there for the wheelchair?
The driveway for the gas station, the exit driveway for the Dandy Lions. So they're going, no, driveway to driveway across two lanes of traffic with no crosswalk.
Which way?
So next steps are to, here, listen to-
We could get a, we can get a meeting with Paul Wiese.
Yeah, I didn't want to do it yesterday until I saw you afterwards.
I mean, he's, Paul's been good in the past, even when he had the previous district engineer. Really, I mean, it's, all we have to do is get you a meeting, he'd be more than welcome to meet us.
Okay.
Great. Any other comments? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to do West Street now?
Yes, why don't we?
Yeah, I can just keep sliding until we have West Street. Actually, West Street is next.
Sorry, there it was.
I didn't know which one went next.
Did it, Peter?
West Street. I didn't put the PDF in here, excuse me, Ms. Jones.
Oh, sorry.
Can we cover other traffic issues before we get to West Street?
I have no objection, what you raised, Stan.
My name's Bob Lynch, 24 Shelby Road.
Thank you.
Before this group back in December of last year, looking for some traffic changes down at the Barrow School. We put up two new do-not-enter signs at the intersection of Shelby and Arcadia, forcing all the traffic to go over to Monroe, up Garrett, and down Shelby Road. So everybody's going in the same direction now. Two cars coming in from Arcadia up Shelby, and two cars going out Shelby trying to get to Arcadia. There's two lines of cars on each side parked. There's only room for one car to go through, and they all sit there and look at each other. We had the new signs put in last summer. And outside of a few people that either haven't seen the signs or they don't apply to them, it has worked fabulous. Everybody's going in the same direction now. This is a process we've been going through since the schools stopped busing. First, we did Edgemont, then we did Stewart, and now we've done Shelby. There's a couple of other things that I had asked for when I was here last. One was a crosswalk across Shelby at Stewart. There's one at the bottom of Stewart right now. I have a hard copy of this, what's on the screen now, if you'd like to look at it. But basically, last December, the Parking Traffic Transportation Task Force was reviewing it. Ultimately, the do-not-enter regulation and the crosswalk on Shelby Road were reviewed favorably, but the crosswalk on Monroe Ave was still in question. I went back, probably in the middle of June, end of June, leaving some voicemails for the new safety officer. She got back to me, I believe it was the first week of July, and knew not too much about it, but said she had to go back to that PTTF force and bring it back up. Because I had mentioned I was looking for a school zone for all the roads that touch the Barrow School property, school zone speed limit, and that I'm still looking for the crosswalk at the end of Stewart, crossing across Shelby. I was advised by George last week, I believe it was, that they've looked at it again and they see no reason. My interpretation of what he said to me, they see no reason for either the crosswalk or no reason for the school zone designation for around the school. I've been led to believe, from the prior safety officer, that the speed limit around that school is 30 miles an hour. There's no school zone there. That's what I was told by the safety officer. We have a school zone 25 miles an hour sign up around the Birch Meadow complex. I don't understand the safety of those children up there anymore than being more value than the safety of the children at the Barrow School. They have been enforcing the parking down there. They like to park under the no parking from here to the corner sign. They like to park over on the crosswalk that's across the end of Stewart. And they like to run the stop sign. Certain people run it, certain people don't. Most people are pretty good with it. And they do more of a rolling stop sign stop, which as far as I'm concerned, seeing I don't wear a badge, that's fine with me. But when they go through it at 20 plus or minus miles an hour, and you hear the tires gripping to the road, if there's a kid at the end of that corner, there's not going to be any time for them to stop, and the kid is not going anywhere but freezing in the street. The crosswalk that I asked for, and they, I assume they approved it from the meetings back in July 4th. I knew we couldn't get anything done with it last December. And I assume, I'll wait till the 1st of July, see if they construct it. And when they didn't, I says, well, 1st of July, they have new money, let's find out what's going on. Which has led to me being told by Georgia, they're not going to do anything about anything. And I'm here to say that they approved the crosswalk before. There's sidewalks on both sides. One side is already done, the school side. So I don't understand not putting the crosswalk in. I bet you out in the back of our development, there's between 20 and 30 young kids that have to cross over that road. And there's, there's no place to do it safely between cars. I don't understand. Thank you.
George?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, to clarify what happened at the PTF and what, what was informed. What I had said is that prior to last year, when Mr. Lynch had approached the previous traffic side, traffic side, and we, safety officer, and we reviewed all this at PTF, there was a series of recommendations that came before the board. And what got, what was eventually installed was what the board approved. And we don't, as you know, we don't go in, yet the other roadway managers, we don't go in and put stop signs and put school zones up without getting the board approval. I wasn't there that night, but I believe it probably was public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, to all that, and what came out of that public hearing, what the board recommended, was installed in the roadway. What I told Mr. Lynch is that the PTF has not seen, heard of any, they've not seen any changes in the conditions down there than what was, than what was there a year and a half ago, and didn't see any reason to warrant us to come back before the board and ask them for something additional that they did not approve the first time. That's what, that's what happened in the PTF meetings.
Mr. Lynch?
I'm here for you to look at it and decide whether or not that crosswalk should go in.
Was the crosswalk approved by the PTF?
At the recent meeting?
Ever.
Ever? I think there was a bunch of, a series of alternatives that was drafted up based on the comments from Mr. Lynch to the previous safety officer.
But was it ever approved?
Chief?
It's not approved by the board.
It wasn't approved by the board?
No. What happened at the meeting, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, good, chief.
At the meeting that was held previously was there were a number of alternatives, number of iterations presented to the board. One of them included changing the route of travel, along with some of the other recommendations that were presented, you know, brought forth by Mr. Lynch. And they were presented to the board as kind of a à la carte venue, if you will. And the board said, at that time, let's do the change in direction of travel and monitor that, see how that plays, and then if we need to make other adjustments in the future, we can do that. And that's what we did. We made the adjustments that were voted on that evening. I think, as Mr. Lynch said, I think that the adjustments that were made were beneficial. I think that they helped with traffic flow.
Immensely.
And, you know, the question now is, do we want to continue to do more? And, you know, with any of these things, as we were talking about, with crosswalks, there needs to be adjustments made on the sidewalks and the side. There are some financial costs associated with these things, so it's not a decision that, you know, the PTF has made, you know, a strong decision one way or another. We don't see a major change in anything that happened from the last year when you, when the board reviewed it previously and put in the change in direction.
Mr. Lynch?
Do you have page two of that particular...
I don't. I just, this is the one I made. I would, though, I can point out, the crosswalk cuts, though, are only going with Stewart Street. They would have to put another one in on the side for Shelby. So there is no handicap ramp on the Shelby side, on either side.
Your point is there's no curb cuts?
There's no curb cuts on Shelby, so they would have to be two installed. It only is the other way, from Stewart to Stewart.
One of the ones that are on the school side, for the Stewart to Stewart, lines up perfectly to go across Shelby Road. So there's only one that would need to be done, I guess. And I'm not a professional on this.
This, this, we need to.
Page two of underlined, the portion where they approved it.
Is it within the purview, oh, sorry. This is a question that should come before the PTF once again, I suppose.
It's already come before them, and they've denied it.
I personally have observed out there, most of the kids, I know that his grandchildren do cross to get to his house from out there. I went out there at the end of the school, yeah, last year with Officer Martel, so he could show me how each school works. Most of the people going, and I actually was out there this afternoon, too, they are crossing with their parents. I did not personally, anytime I've been out there, see 20 to 30 kids cross. I've seen a couple. It's mostly with their parents. So that's just what I've seen out there. And most of the traffic is all supposed to be going the same way. And to speak about the speed limit, there's also, you know, we can enforce a reasonable speed, so during school times. There is a school zone out on West Street. The West Street does have the 20 mile an hour school zone enforcement, but we also can enforce a reasonable speed during schools. And where this is very residential, most of the people operating on that road at the time are just picking up their children.
But is it true that on Edgemont, and at Stewart, and on Shelby, there is none of the school zone 20 mile an hour signs?
There's no posted signs, no, sir.
Is that typical?
You find them more on the main roads.
Most on the main roads.
Is it because it's self-limiting on the secondary roads? There's no need?
Well, I mean, we have one on Summer, but we don't have one on, what's the side you're coming down? Oak does not want it. We don't, we don't put a 20 mile an hour speed limit on every street that is...
Is there a restriction by the state on how, where you can...
They've changed the regulations. They're very specific on how the placement of them and where they go in and what the limits of the mark. In order to establish a school zone, there has to be a used crosswalk within that, within the limits of the school zone. The schools, the crosswalk has to be within a certain proximity of the building. I'd actually have to check to see if this would actually meet the regulations. Typically, when you do a school zone, the limit of school zone is like, I think the regulations changed to 300 feet from the extension of the sidelines in the building. That's the maximum extent of a school zone.
So both of the crosswalks, Shelby and there, would fall into that classification?
I believe it would. I'd have to check all of them, but I believe it does make it, is the newest one.
I mean, I'm sympathetic. The trouble with looking at history is it doesn't tell you very much about the future often. So looking at what last year's kids did may not tell you what next year's kids do, where they particularly live. So I'm...
So one, I just want to say, we actually discussed traffic before as well. I think you might have missed that one as well. And one of the things we talked about is, I actually live in a neighborhood where somebody made a request for a stop sign, that stop sign, the traffic study didn't justify it, they put it up. Neighbors that are there were upset because it didn't come to protest it because the traffic study didn't warrant it. So I think that we need to really be careful about making sure that the dollars we're spending are being spent where they're most needed.
Yep.
So if we already have a lot of mitigation that's been done for one-way traffic, it's in a residential area as opposed to in Birch Meadow where it's, we already know that Birch Meadow is a very busy road, we have a lot of issues there, there's a lot of traffic going by there. This situation may already have been mitigated by other circumstances, and so putting in another crosswalk just because doesn't necessarily make sense. So we want to make sure that it's really valid, that there's a good justified reason for it. That's just my position on it. So the fact that it was requested before and other things were done may mean that this is now not required, so.
George, how would we establish whether it's compliant with speed, density, traffic?
We'd have to evaluate the, you know, we could do a speed study of the area, beyond that, it's just meeting the conditions of meeting the eligibility if we put a school zone in. Now, getting to Marcy's comment, that they are not free. A typical handicap access entryway into curb cut, depending on what conditions you run in, vary anywhere from 25 to $3,500 each. So this one here would be $5,000 to $7,000 to install, that one crosswalk. Then you have an additional cost of the signs, those, that's minor.
It's not free, but it's not an enormous sum, right?
No. The signage there, the sign, between the signs and the breakaway post is approximately $150, $200 each sign, plus the labor to install it.
What's the consensus of the board? I don't know, I didn't start thinking about this until, you know, a few minutes ago, it's...
I think, I think one thing in looking at, you know, the need for a crosswalk there is, and I'm sure, you know, it's hard to tell because there isn't one there, but how many people are gonna, how many children are gonna use it? You know, and you can get an idea of that depending, by really observing it, finding out where the, where the children are. I mean, if, depending on how they're coming up, the access and where they're walking, you can tell if someone's gonna be crossing that way. I mean, you could, you know, if there are a lot of children coming from the far end of Arcadia and walking up to the school, well, you can assume that a portion of those are gonna use the crosswalk, there are a portion that go on the other side of the street. But if you don't have a number of children walking in that direction from that vicinity, then, you could, you can approximate how many people are gonna use it.
But the problem I have with that is it doesn't tell you anything about what happens tomorrow, right? Today's...
No, that's true. And no location does. I mean, you know, as you know, any, any study and evaluation you do is for that instant of the time, that's it.
No, Marcy, I'd be inclined if it's a matter of 5,000 plus a couple thousand more for signage.
A couple hundred.
Couple hundred, excuse me. And maybe that's carbon copied over for Birch Meadow, and you've got some additional safety and restricted speed, that's probably not, I understand the point about where's the best merit, but it's not a mutually exclusive decision, right? You can satisfy both needs, yeah?
I'm just saying that I don't, I haven't heard a compelling reason. There are a few children that cross there, not many. Is it, I just don't, I don't, and it doesn't sound like there's a huge danger. So this is a school that's essentially tucked back and has a lot of dead ends around it. It's not like people are racing through here. I personally don't see that it's, I would want to see more data to support it, that's what I would want to see. I would want to see an actual case behind it. What's the reasoning? What, you know, how many people are crossing there? What kind of speed is, are the cars going around there? Before I would say that it's a good use of it.
Is that something we, Mr. Lynch?
How many people have to cross it for it to become a point where it could be done?
I think I'd be looking for some guidance in terms of what, you know, what we've done in other crosswalk areas and other areas around schools.
There's no, Mr. Chairman, if I may, there's no pure guidance on how many people, how many people have to cross, crosswalk to warrant a school zone. There are other locate, there are other warrants that determine, you know, where you should put crosswalks and whatnot, as far as they stand as an ABC, but for specific, for schools, you know, it's purely a judgment. You're gonna look, you're gonna look at not only just the number of children, you know, if there are people using it, but what's the observed speeds and the volume of traffic in the area. It's gonna be a combination of all those, of all those items.
Mr. Lynch?
Could I ask George a question?
Sure.
On the crosswalks at the end of Stewart Road, how many would have to be put across Shelby Road? You said something about having to do all of the intersection. You're talking just one crosswalk across the street?
What I was...
Or one on the other side of Stewart, across the street to Shelby also?
What I, Mr. Chairman, what I meant by then is that we can't use the existing handicap ramp that on the...
Oh, you can't use that?
That's using a cross Stewart, we would have to cut in a separate handicap ramp, that's what I meant by that. Technically, unless you get a variance from the access board, the crosswalks are not supposed, the crosswalk, any ca, crosswalks coming to a corner are not supposed to meet at the apex of the curve, you're supposed to go, you're supposed to go outside. And so anytime you see a crosswalk at a 90-degree intersection going to that common point, that means it's an old-fashioned crosswalk and handicap ramp that doesn't meet today's standards are actually someone petitioned the state to get a variance. And they're really only hand them out when it's impossible to do it the other way. This case, it's possible, so we'd have to put a separate handicap ramp in.
I guess to Marcy's point, maybe it's worth doing a quick count just to get the numbers so we know what we're dealing with.
Sure.
And we could take it up at a lighter date, look at it a second time. Any other questions?
Will proceed your work, the process work?
We'll return to the topic. We're just running a little late tonight, but I, you've made your point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right, West Street?
You have to stay there. I'll leave that up for most of it, and I'll talk to the rest of the slide. As you know, the, well, you may not know, there's been a lot of improvement, work that's happening in the West Street project ever since the tip, we got included and tipped for next this year's round of construction. In the past year and a half, there's been several meetings, sidewalks with the state, myself, the consulting engineer, and all the utility companies, looking at pole relocations and the work that town staff would have to do, fire alarm, RMD, as far as moving utilities and making sure that every pole we're saying has to be moved and whatnot. There's been two of those in the past year. Getting back to the main pilot project, the state anticipates advertising the project December 7th. That may get pushed off to the end of December, but right now, that's their current schedule to, to open the first batch, batch of contracts using the federal funds. That means that the state typically has about a three-month review period, a three-month period for submission of bids, so that by the end of the winter, beginning of spring, they should have a contractor on board, a contract signed, and be ready to start. The project is at least a two-year project. At least. It could be more, but it's definitely a two-year project, it's not a year project or 18-month like the Main Street project was. The current pure construction cost is about $6.7 million. That's just pure construction items. When you add in the allowance the state has for traffic details, for force account works, force account work, i.e. the money that utility companies are moving to holes, the state pays proportion of that, and their inspection costs, what the state's carrying for 100% of the project cost is just under $8.1 million. The recent inclusion was MWRA, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, we actually have another meeting tomorrow, they're fast-tracking their redundant pipeline on the West Street, this that's installed 36-inch. The state has agreed to install, have that installed and put in the project as a non-participating item. So a portion of the 36-inch main that will run from the Woburn Town Line down West Street down and off of Oak Street, that will be included in the project. The state is fast-tracking that design, where we think we can, we all think we can get it done without causing a delay of the project, that's what we're all shooting for. Last week, the state found out that National Grid has to replace 4,500 feet of gas main. That will be done during the project while construction's going on. So you add MWRA, a water main of 4,500 feet of gas main, we're replacing virtually all of our drainage that was planned under the project, and because of the proposed route, we ought, because of, we want to get rid of our 12-inch water main underneath 93. And at one time, when the state, when the MWR was gonna go down South Street, we thought they'd put that in. We actually have a small section of water main we have to install, too. So in addition to the roadway work, it's over a year, it is worth the utility work. That's why I say it's, it's a well-over-two-year project. Our water main work is MWRA eligible, so the current bond issue that we have today, we'll be using that to put the, our shot section of 20-inch water main in. I don't know what we're gonna fit it yet, but I told MWR to leave room for a 20-inch line, as they're looking for their 36-inch line. We will be, our appraiser has gone through and appraised all 108 easements, I think it is, I forget the exact number right now. They actually did include a permanent easement on Borden Road that was in Woburn. We actually changed the limits of the project by 50 feet, so we don't have to deal with it.
Okay.
Well, one of the reasons, it's twofold. One, you know, it's possible that the easement does exist, if you look at the layout, the layout comes to a point, but if you look at what's built there, there already is a radius. So we have to pay the price for something that was done years ago, probably when they installed 93. Maybe there's a document around someplace that the state took an easement on behalf of us, City Woburn, and no one can find it. The problem with that is that in order for us to take an easement, a permanent, a temporary movement, we need legislative approval, I believe, on the project, and we delayed eight months. So I talked to the consultant today, the project manager, and we're just gonna knock off that, that little radius and handicap ramp. It was an expensive handicap ramp that was gonna be built in. But all the appraisals are done. The cost of the easements right now, roughly, I didn't, we haven't finally totaled all of them, it's probably about $170,000. So the cost of our non-participating items, the cost of the easements, the cost of our added engineering costs, some of the money I owe the consultant right now for extras that have been going on, doing the work to get the plans done, and the bidding services, PS and E. There's, there's work that they have to do for the state after the 100% design, which is another phase of contract, plus all the contract administration. Between all those... Between all those and contingencies is close to $900,000. So the Fall Town Meeting will be looking for approval of the easements, for the taking of the easements and the cost of all the costs of the job, including the non-participating items and appraisals. We already started a webpage. We're going to start populating it on the town's website and then hopefully before... Not hopefully, but sometime this fall, mid-fall to late fall. We will probably be setting up public hearings and try to inform... Get more information out to the people and see how we'll handle some of the daily progress of the work as it went along. When we were in Main Street, we had some... The chambers involved and had a lot of businesses. We used to hold weekly meetings in Town Hall and had a weekly email, but we'll do something similar. Try to get it the same, but it will be a lengthy construction project. And between that and all of our water main work, you'll realize why I made the statements for our town meeting. Every street to term this next year, there'll be construction.
Thank you.
But the good news is it will be a substantial improvement.
Absolutely.
In the town's infrastructure between the water, the drainage, the roadway, the sidewalks, everything else.
And the gas lines, right?
Yeah, the gas lines.
And just that's the map I was... I apologize for not having the PDF for my blow. For those, you know, in the audience or yourselves that do not know the limits of the project, we're basically starting from the Woben Town Line and going a few hundred feet beyond the intersection of West Willow and Summer Ave. The signal at West Street and South Street, it's basically going to remain this change with some new equipment going on. All these signals will have video cameras for detection rather than loops. They work a little bit better. Plus, we don't have to worry about every time it's a contracted work and then we dig up a loop and have to spend $6,000 to have them repaired, although the cameras aren't cheap either. There will be a new signalized intersection at Woben and West Street, a signalized intersection at King Street and obviously the intersection at West Willow and Summer will be fully signalized. This project also includes handicap upgrades and upgrades to equipment of the Summer and Woben Street intersection. It's about one point five miles... One point six miles in roadway length, but if you add in some of the extension we're going into the side streets, total project's about 1.9 miles.
How about sidewalks?
There were... Thank you, Bob. The project is completely doing all repave, and it's not full-depth reconstruction. It's a combination of mill and overlay. This is one of the compromises we made to state to reduce project costs. There is a significant amount of reclamation, what we normally do in the streets, but not to full-deep gravel replacement like was posed on Main Street, even though we didn't do that in every location mainly because the basis there doesn't require it. Brand-new curving sidewalks in the entire route except for about four or five houses as we get to on the right-hand side as we're approaching West Willow and Summer.
But we're going to do those.
I just talked to the project manager last Wednesday. Our consultant is looking at it now. It is going to involve some retaining walls, but I... We all, during our sidewalk a couple of weeks ago, we all said, "Look, this is ridiculous. We're spending $7 million and for sake of some probably regrading issues on some driveways, we may have to completely pave some driveways over and put in some stone walls. We're not doing floor houses. Let's put the sidewalk in the rest of the way." The project manager for the state actually agreed. So as long as we don't blow the upset limit that they've applied to the project, there will be sidewalks going in the entire length of both sides of Brooklyn.
Good.
Thank you, Bob, for reminding me.
Citizens should be very happy with these kinds of improvements, the new roadway and...
Yeah, well, it'll be nice. It's a vast improvement.
I have a question on what type of outreach we might be doing to neighboring towns since West Street is a big commuter street and we have people from lots of other towns coming through there. I'm just curious.
It's a thorough fair.
Are we planning to do anything?
Well, I know... What happens in the past, at least in the recent year or so is I just reach out to the other town managers, in this case, the mayor, and just give them the information we have and show them how it's going to affect us. When we did Havill Street, I just called North Reading and said, "Look, here's something that describes the project. You might want to send this out to your residents." So they just sent it out the way we would have. And, you know, and they appreciate the heads up for knowing what's coming in the week.
How do the GPS sites find out about ongoing construction?
That I don't know.
Yeah? We don't have anything to do with that.
Don't know.
Much of this work will be limited to a single lane then during the construction, much of the...
You know, that's really not known right now. A lot of that decision-making is actually established by the contractor and not something that an engineer or the state actually designs into the contract. There will be a... Another meeting that we still have to hold with the state and the chief. You know, and, you know, there's some areas that can be detoured, which would help, you know, would close the street down, only to leave it open to local residents, but it would actually make the project go faster. But then there's other areas of the roadway where it's just from work we've done in the past, that detour, it's just a lend itself to working. So, but, you know, we can't... Will we run... Can run a detour? We will. Will we can't? Yes, we'll have to shuffle one lane of traffic through on the roadway.
And also in conjunction with the discussion on the proposed San Agnes School, we discussed this project. We're going to clearly have to inform Joshua Eden Barrows and Parker Middle School at the very least, and the schools have resources to reach all those parents with updates. So, you know, it will be a full court press. I think from a location standpoint, if we want to have neighborhood meetings, Parker will probably make the most sense because it's far enough away from the construction you could actually get to it. So we'll have to have a couple of meetings that really are school-oriented because that's where the schools are.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
George.
Let's see, next is the...
Christine wants to go over, I guess you call it what, other traffic issues?
We have a few issues. It's not just quick updates.
Just wanted to update you a little bit on where Officer Martel left off with the traffic rules and regs. They're completed, they've been given to Laura Jem. We updated Appendix Four, which we spoke to Mass Department of Transportation and got only the approved and authorized heavy commercial vehicle exclusions. I know Bancroft Ave was one of the questionable ones. The only thing that the Mass DOT had on that was that it had a temporary exclusion during the high school project, so it's no longer valid. That was one that I know was brought up. South Street, we verified that the special speed regulation signs are in the correct spots, so that was good. Scotland and Summer Ave, that's been removed from Appendix One. There was never a stop sign authorized there, and it's not there, so. Temple Street, the no parking here to corner sign was relocated to exactly where it needed to be. And the traffic rules and regs is down to 103 pages as he did the asterisks for certain streets that have no extra regulations. So Laura Jem has those.
A question on trucking on the lower part of Bancroft. Did that get addressed previously?
We couldn't find anything with Mass Highway... Mass DOT, excuse me, that approved that as anything other than the high school project.
Okay.
And the previous heavy traffic restrictions on Franklin were determined to be invalid originally?
Yeah.
Chairman, if I may, heavy vehicle exclusions, we have to justify to the state that we have and five percent of that are heavy vehicles. That is the only way that they'll allow it. We have had... We've taken axle counts on that roadway. I think the police... I think Justin did it once, we did it twice, and we never even came close to maybe five percent. We didn't even reach three.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just some other traffic requests that have come in through the PTTF. Christopher Latham of the Latham Law Office, he's located across the street from what you're looking at. That is low on Main Street, the CVS parking lot. He requested a no turn on red there. The PTTF members went out there and agreed with his concern. The vehicle, as you can see, has to pull into the crosswalk to basically see if they can take a turn on a red. So we're asking for a no turn on red approval there. Mary Ellen O'Neil has requested a stop sign. If you all remember the old Atlantic Way, there was a stop sign affixed to the Atlantic coming out the easement driveway there. She's concerned for the pedestrian's safety as they walk out on Haven Street.
This is just to keep them off of the sidewalk and walkway?
Exactly, yes, to have to stop and look before they pull all the way out.
Is it appropriate to put a... Sometimes you see those big round mirrors or other ways to kind of look around the corner. Is that an appropriate improvement? Where you've got blind spots on both sides, where you've got... You're encouraging people to walk on the sidewalk, is that something that's...
I think if the issue is that cars are... Our car vehicles are coming out and are not observing the upcoming traffic, the best solution is to put a stop sign. And that's, you know, that's an instance where you warrant it. Where you have a lesser volume road entering a main road. I mean, that's where stop signs are supposed to go when you have the... You have obstructions and the ability to have conflicts. Those are the warrants for a stop sign, some of them anyways.
Yep.
Down at the same place here at Haven Street, the Oak Tree Developments and everything, one of the owners, Cookies and Cream Bakery, is located down at Two Haven Street. He brought up to us that some of his customers can't find parking because the... It's a two-hour parking limit that whole way down, that whole strip of parking spots. So he has requested two... At least two thirty-minute parkings around the area. We took a look at it. We figured the two most western spots on the north side of Haven Street would make the most sense for some of the businesses around there for customers to run in and out. It's also the easiest for police enforcement to be down the end. We can see it from a number of streets and enforce it better. So those are the two locations where we would propose the two thirty-minute spots would be allocated.
That sounds like a silly question. Do we have a precedent of thirty-minute slots elsewhere?
We do.
Sadly, we do.
Sadly.
Sadly, we do. There's becoming now a proliferation of these places. And we went through a very long process of rationalizing the parking rules and regulations in the downtown a few years back in order to come up with the sort of the universal two-hour limit. Didn't make everybody happy, but it made the vast majority of the merchants happy that, you know, that were engaged in the process. We had a series of meetings with folks who were, you know, merchants in the downtown. And sort of drip by drip, there's been these requests by specific merchants to have short-term parking in front of their, you know, facilities. So the first one was on Main Street, which was the convenience store there and then the up by the CVS and now, you know, these folks down here. And I've never been in favor of any of them because they're... I, you know, it started with the convenience store, which had parking that nobody used behind the convenience store. There, you know, sort of typically plenty of spaces in the lot, you know, behind CVS, you know, most all, you know, all of the day. And, you know, they're sort of the same kind of condition, you know, in that area. And I go there, go down Haven Street as much as anybody else. I never have any trouble finding parking within a short walk of wherever it is that I'm, you know, that I'm looking to go. Now, that may not always be the case depending on, you know, things. You know, if somebody bought the next block over there on High Street and built a tall building, you know, along the lines of, you know, Oak Tree or something, and that could change the situation, but right now...
We have more businesses that are going in here, so Pamplemousse is getting ready to open up. It'll be a similar type of a run-in, run-out.
What's the sense of...
You could argue that the yogurt places are run-in, run-out, the pizza... So I can... I understand where you're coming from completely, but I can see a need to sometimes make some some of these location stops. Like the convenience store sounded like maybe that one wasn't the best one if there is parking behind, but...
This is the one across from Trump, is what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
I see your point because that whole block of Thirty Haven is going to have a number of kind of discretionary spend, short-term impulse buy type things that are lending themselves to five minutes in, five minutes out kind of behavior.
Is somebody staying there long-term? Employees, they're overstaying the two hours? Who is filling these spaces that people can't find parking?
Uh, no, sir. Well, we have the traffic enforcement officer. He's very good at finding anyone over two hours, so he's good at enforcing.
So I'm not sure there's a problem.
There are still a number at least that are over, you know, about an hour or so because, you know, Portland Pie has seating.
Oh, that's true.
Zynga, sometimes people can take a little bit of time. There's a beauty... There's two salons in the area, so that's about an hour minimum. At the salons also. And then the pediatrics will be going in there, so that'll be probably around thirty-two and a half minutes visits.
Yeah, a question from Mr. Lynch.
Mr. Lynch?
Is there any handicap parking down that end of Haven Street?
The... Sure, if I may, the... I don't think there's any towards Haven Street on... Towards High Street on Haven, but there are handicap spaces across the street by the depot and the new island that was built right near the accessway to coming out of the parking lot. The... Once the parking lot spot stops, there's a handicap space there.
But nothing down where all these new businesses are going in?
Across the street, but right in front of those doors, no. The extreme... And this is an old aerial, but you have the bump out that's out here right now and there's a handicap space here. The other handicap spaces are down here.
I mean, that picture still shows the Atlantic there.
It's Google.
I Google it.
Well, it depends on which angle you go. You get old pictures sometimes. Just reverse the angle and rotate it after you get it.
What are you looking for from the board tonight? Looking for a sense of the board or...
Just information and to make these parking spaces would have... You'd have to schedule a hearing.
Yeah, all of these are just for your information now. It's requests that have come from the public that the PTTF has put forward or at least wants to inform about, you know, you can schedule hearings in the future to deal with all these. It'd be nice to do them with groups, which is why they're here tonight.
I mean, I'm sympathetic. That's an area where we've put a lot of money downtown and encouraged this very kind of vital downtown behavior, so it's not inconsistent with having short-term parking. So I'm inclined to entertain the need, you know. So I'd support a hearing for this and any other similar kind of...
Well, there's a whole series of these that I think we'd need to have hearings on.
Yeah, only if it's part of a comprehensive look. Mindful of what Ben's saying here.
And I believe we just have one other issue, stop sign request.
Oh, there's more than one. Well, that one other issue within some information.
The reason I thought the board would benefit from seeing this now is just because there are a number of new businesses ready to open and want, which is just ready to get out. So this is kind of a reminder and an update as to what the downtown situation looks like, which, you know, we may also discuss in terms of parking. But it's good to think about it proactively. Whether you need to act proactively is different, but you need to be thinking about it.
To the point. I mean, that building's been empty so long, you don't even think about needing to act. Yeah.
We had a request... Chairman, we had a request for... To look at the intersection of Fairview and Sunnyside to install a full-way stop in that location. Currently, it's just a straight T intersection, ninety-degree full-way intersection. There's no stop control on Sunnyside, but there is on Fairview Ave. We looked at... We looked at all the things you're supposed to based on the ABTC standards and the state regulations. There's been no accidents within the previous five years. Traffic volumes are low. The peak hour on Sunnyside is ninety-six with a total of seven thirty-five. It's really coming in, coming out significantly lower. Fairview, the peak of vehicles per hour is forty-four with three fifteen average daily traffic volume. That was fairly consistent depending on which side or the other. The speeds weren't excessive. The speeds on Sunnyside, the eighty-fifty percent tire was twenty-eight with the average about twenty-two. The Fairview Ave eighty-fifth percent tire was eighteen miles an hour with a mean of twelve, which is reasonable because they're approaching a stop sign and they're going to stop. This is just a diagram of the roadway with accounts on it. We're just iterating. As I said, there's right angle intersections, there's really no adverse grades. It's fairly flat except coming up Fairview from the Riverside area. Pedestrian volume is low, very low. It is the suggested safe routes of school. We'll classify that mainly because we just recently had a Safe Routes of School project and actually they put sidewalks on one side on Sunnyside up to the Riverside. Fairview went... The Fairview went section. Put handicap ramps there for crosswalks and neither did the state nor the state engineers recommend a full-way stop in this project, which was just completed a year ago. So obviously, they did a full analysis, a more detailed analysis, which normally gets done of the standards that we're trying to comply with. So obviously, they did a full analysis, a more detailed analysis, which normally gets done, uh, of the standards that we're trying to comply with. The police department has patrols in the area, uh, there's never, there's never been a citation issued in the area. Uh, site distances, at the lowest of the tables, go at thirty miles per hour. At thirty miles per hour, you need two hundred feet, that's what the recommendation is. There's a problem, the sightlines are achieved in all the directions except for the, at the bushes, at the corner of Fifty-Seventh, Fairview Ave. If you're coming out of Sunnyside and heading north, you have trouble viewing... If you're, the cul-de-sac is up towards the top of the screen, and the, uh, Prospect Street's towards the bottom of the screen. If you're coming down Sunnyside approaching the intersection, uh, the hedges that are on the corner here, you're restricted to see coming up Fairview, same thing as you're coming down, if you're coming out of Fairview, you're restricted to what you can see for the cars coming out towards, towards the cul-de-sac end. There are trees along the edge of the road here that, you know, if, if you get to the exact right spot, it, it forms a wall, however, as you're approaching the intersection, you can see in between those trees, and if you get, if, once you get beyond that one point that it forms a wall, you can safely see too. So, we, um, you know, based on the study that the engineering department feels, it, it didn't mean to, uh, requirements to, um, install a four-way intersection, but what PTTF is recommending, that we approach the residents at Fifty-Seven and see if they will, uh, trim their bushes, they are overhanging, they're planted on their property, but they are overhanging substantially into the right-of-way layout. They won't be too thrilled because we removed two or three of them when we put the handicap ramps in, we're gonna basically, that they're kind of like a, a hemlock, so you can't just clean-cut one side, you're, we're gonna be asking them to cut them down thoroughly.
What, um, what recourse do, does the town have when the line of sight regulations are not met? Do you have two or more recourse do you have?
As far as installing, uh, as far as safety devices illegally.
Yeah, how many lines of sight can you have impaired before you have to take action?
Um, we, it, it's, it's really a volunteer, I mean, that was something that, uh, we tried to get, we tried to get through past at town meeting one year, and, um...
Sight easements?
Sight easements, sightline easements, which we don't have a requirement, so we take it on a case-by-case, uh, um, location, case-by-case, uh, study, and, you know, there are some people that volunteer the work, um, other people you hear, well, I've been thinking about cutting those things down anyways, I'll be gladly, gladly doing. The problem lies is, and it's, you know, we have some enforcement capabilities where it's overhanging the layout. When it's entirely on their property, there's not much we can do.
About fencing, I mean, I see people running six-foot fences right up to the corner points of the two sidewalks, and it really doesn't impair the...
I'm not a hundred percent sure, there might be something in the, um, zoning regulations. Road zoning regulations that limit the height as you get to the intersection, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but...
Did you have suggestions for the, uh, zoning advisory committee?
You know, we try the sightlines, but there's not a lot we can do.
So, so, Mr. Chair, I actually, uh, walk through this intersection quite frequently, it's on one of my walking routes, so I guess I'm one of the few pedestrians that do go through there. I've never seen any cars, honestly, or rarely see cars there, but I would be happy to have that bush go away because it actually, you, you have to walk out in the street to go by there, so, it's, um...
Next time you walk by.
I mean, if those, if those were trimmed back, it would, it would greatly improve visibility, and that's the one location, and, you know, and, and actually, you know, the, the guidance that you receive from AMTCD and, uh, the MassDOT is that, you know, if you can do things like this, they recommend that, that over a four-way intersection, especially where none of the other conditions are bad.
You're gonna approach the homeowner?
We walk down that way all the time, and, you know.
It's not needed.
I told the chief he can approach him.
All right. Anything else?
Uh, I have a couple of quick updates, I could, uh, have slides or just quickly run through them, whatever you prefer.
Quick, you're in through them because of the hour.
I know you're running through. The Salem-Main Street intersection, the timing of the lights, uh, we, we did go through, we had a consultant study it, we did re-time it, and the first time we did it, you know, everyone probably realized, hey, we solved the problem low on Salem Street, except we made Main Street a mess. Uh, Main Street, well, was back up well beyond the cemetery, uh, so we went out, uh, September seventeenth, re-timed it. We think we've struck the balance, I mean, they're, uh, between what's going on. You know, there are some, a lot of funky things that go on there, a lot of people can really follow the timings up is when people on Main Street wanna take a left, or when you come up Salem, you wanna take a left, sometimes you go through a whole phase and no one gets through the intersection. And that's, we don't have the room to make a third, a third lane, so, and that's unavoidable, but, uh, when that's not following traffic up, and we think we've struck a balance, and it's working pretty well, but we'll keep an eye on it.
Good, thank you.
Salem Street head crossing down by Miss State Road, that's under design right now, we'll bid that during the winter, and will be constructed in the spring. It's not a fully actuated signal, uh, it'll be a push-button there, and what will happen is that the, um, the, once the button's pushed, it'll activate the, um, yellow flashes, actually, we're gonna use strobes, they're a lot, uh, more distinguishable, to warn people that people are in the cross, crosswalk. We'll be putting one on each side at the crosswalk, and then we'll have one probably right as you come off the road or you see those cars coming off the cur, curve, can have some advanced warning, you know, when it's something's crossing. The bus stop down at Walkersburg Drive, the bus stop's in, it's finally been delivered, actually, it got delivered early. Uh, the easement language is being reviewed by Dickerson, we hope to get something back from them, um, by this week, so we can start the work. Uh, we've already called DigSafe, we're ready to go as soon as, as soon as the legal language is worked out and make sure they don't have any problems with it, we'll record the easement and we'll start the work and get it installed. One other item is the not threading, not threading H, uh, heavy vehicle exclusion request. Um, this was requested, oh, back in, uh, late December, and in January, we sent them an original letter saying, well, we'll, we'll support it if you support our Franklin Street HVD. You know, we didn't say yes, we didn't say no. The state wants something, a defined yes or no from us, uh, so, so we've been requesting again to give them a, a firm response. Uh, we sent the letter in last week, well, September twenty-fifth, saying...
No, sorry.
Basically, because it's gonna really increase the heavy vehicles on Harrell Street and on Franklin Street.
Sure.
The, and it, it will most likely get denied from the state, and that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions, the board?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Let's see, I guess, what's last and certainly not least is town government reorganization.
I thought I'd give the board and, uh, the public just a little bit of background into some of this process. Uh, last week was meant to be a small bite of the whole process, um, but it, at this point, it's clear we should go over the whole process, and I won't take a lot of time, I, I understand the time. Again, I'm not gonna go over every slide, but, uh, you know, this has been a process that's been ongoing through June. As the selectmen recall, the goal-setting process was finalized in early July after some discussion in the month of June. And just to be clear, the staff had significant involvement in the goal-setting process. It wasn't done in a vacuum, it wasn't done by you or I, it was, it was really a collaborative effort by all. The only thing I'll highlight from this slide is, I started counting, and I didn't record every one, and I stopped when I got to fifty meetings between June and September that I've had with various members of staff. Sometimes it was one person, sometimes it was several people. The goals that were approved, uh, that are, you know, pertinent to this discussion are the first two goals, which is, uh, you know, redesign your department if you need to, uh, tell me what the optimal structure would look like, regardless of how it looks now, and then an important second part is, how do we get there? Um, the second goal, which we really haven't discussed much yet, but we will, is professional development. What do we need to fund and sustain good professional, good levels of professional development and training for all the departments? So again, this is just meant kind of as a background. Uh, in terms of the first goal, I had two objectives, one was to improve the current operations, uh, but honestly, more important was to really take a, take a focus at the long-term development of the organization. Uh, and I'll come back to some of these. The sustainability question, I suppose, given my background, is always in the front of my mind, not in the back. Um, some of the rules I sort of set for myself, I suppose you'd say, is not to increase the use of free cash at November Town Meeting because of this, and this proposal does not. Um, we have a very healthy permits revolving fund balance because of all this economic development that happened. Uh, it's over six hundred thousand dollars, we really haven't been using it, uh, yet, and honestly, some of the money has flowed in fairly recently. But if some members go back in time when we had similar, healthy balances, um, we used it to fund full positions for a few years, and then some of those things changed, and we got to the point where we were funding a position with the remaining balance one year, and then we laid the person off. So, I think a better approach, and to be fair, we, maybe we didn't understand the cash flow in and out of that fund, is to really plan this, just like we've planned Salem Real Estate, for instance, to be spread over a number of years, so that's, that's one of the factors. We need to be able to support whatever we do now, just because we happen to have resources, you know, in the future, and using a three percent revenue growth is, is pretty much consensus among staff, it used to be almost four, so that's kind of quite a big difference. Clearly, an approach all along was to conduct another pay-in-class study for non-union, and then to use a peer-community approach that FinCom's discussed in union negotiations, and until a few weeks ago, these were the plans. Likewise, we had a follow-up after the goals were approved to have continued discussions and meetings, and over six hundred thousand dollars of requests came in by the August first, request, uh, requested deadline date, and then we met again as department heads and started, kind of hashed forward of that six hundred thousand, you know, how much is sustainable and affordable, and what's the priority? So that's just meant to sort of give the board a quick background. In terms of what we discussed last week, just to rehash it slightly, there's, there's three distinct steps in front of the board. The first is an article at town meeting that proposes to make changes to the table of organization. That's the structure of departments, and I'll show you a picture of that shortly. As I mentioned, I'd like to combine two small departments with half of the finance department each. One is the accounting department, take all the finance pieces out of finance and put them together, and then take the remainder of the finance, which really is more of an administrative function, and combine them with the town manager department. And then the only other piece to that is to move the two business administrators out of Public Works and out of, um, uh, police, and into this central location. Uh, there's a peripheral piece to this, which I think, still think is valuable, is, and that's moving recreation from DPW to community services. So the organization chart, that's the first task, if you will, in front of the board, and the first request, is to approve this organization chart, or something like it, which again establishes these departments. Um, it shows finance, which is the combination of the old, half the old finance and accounting, and it shows administrative services, which is a combination of the old town manager and the other half of the finance department. And there's very few changes to anyone else other than the recreation function. So that's the first part. To, um, to hearken back to goal one, um, you know, critical to me in, in the way I think, I can't help it, is, is planning and thinking in the long run. Uh, and sometimes I think more in the long run than I need to, and less in the short run than I need to. Uh, but I hearken this process, or I compare it to, um, when I got here seven or eight years ago, I thought some improvements could be made to the capital planning process, where every year, as, as many of you know from FinCom, uh, in those days, whatever money was left over was put to capital, period. So after everything else was funded and hashed out, whatever was left went to capital. There was a capital plan, it was five years, it was pretty solid for two years, and then pretty vague for the years three, four, and five. Um, it, it seemed as if we needed to do a lot better, that we had fallen behind in capital, our fire engines were in terrible shape. So, with a lot of discussion and internal meetings and similar, we keep, we created a process that has now become extremely accepted, and some people that don't know the past don't even realize what a disastrous shape we are in. And the keys are, you need to have a very transparent process, which we did. You need to have some kind of a funding mechanism to rely on, um, and you need to create something that's sustainable and accepted and doesn't require a huge amount of discussion all the time. So, I'd like to make that attempt at sort of the HR area and the staffing area. Now, by its nature, it's not going to be quite as simple as capital, because people change, they're a little more dynamic than a piece of equipment. Um, you won't be able to, you know, say that the organization chart I proposed will last you forever, because things will change, and that's just, that's, the organization has to be able to change with it. But that's kind of a real backdrop of what I'm attempting to put forward, is, is a mechanism that'll organize our thinking in the HR area a little bit more, uh, long-term, and not require a lot of short-term thinking, how much can we afford to pay this year? It's really a backdrop as to, you know, what we need to do as, as an employer. Um, there's been a series of discussions since the last meeting, as Ben mentioned earlier, we had another one this morning. And I'm gonna come back with a different proposal, uh, in two weeks, I'm not gonna get into the details of that tonight, honestly, 'cause I just started to make them today, although I think I know. I wanna make it very clear to everyone, if they're not clear, that there's some changes from that step one that I've asked you to do in the table of organization, that I think are essential as part of that. There's other things that I suggested that I can distinguish as different, and doesn't, they don't need to be part of if you wanna do the reorganization of departments, they can be done in a different way. Uh, we can defer that and have a pay-in-class study moved up into November, for instance, well, I, I guess I don't wanna jump ahead. Um, you know, at this point, I'm inclined, instead of asking for the pay-in-class study to be funded in the next fiscal year, to ask for it in November. I was going to ask for some professional development funds in November, I'll defer that to FY fifteen, so we're just swapping those two around. To the extent that the request you see in a couple of weeks is less than what you saw before, I still think it's very important that we set those funds aside. Again, within the budget process, um, you know, all players, the schools are certainly supportive of this, we can afford it, and I'll get into that detail with FinCom in another week or so. If you see a proposal that's less than the roughly hundred and fifty thousand you saw before, if, just to make up a number, it's a hundred thousand, I'm gonna request fifty thousand be put in a wage account under HR to be determined where it lands. So we'll wait for the results of the pay-in-class study. If there is a result available in FY fourteen in time for the annual town meeting, we'll have a suggestion. I don't know if that's realistic or not, but it's possible, I just don't know if it's realistic. Um, if that doesn't work, then I'll continue the request into FY fifteen, and this is to give everyone some confidence that it will be funded. If I go back to my capital example, the capital plan was hardly robust, because quite frankly, most departments didn't put a lot of time and effort into asking for capital because they knew they wouldn't get it. So the capital plan was really not as, as fair as it needed to be for the whole community to understand what it costs to run capital. You know, I think we can just demonstrate a, a couple of simple steps of good faith in showing that there's gonna be a funding mechanism here, and it's not fair to really discuss that now, it really has to be wrapped into the budget process so you can understand it, but I think it's somewhat of a gesture of good faith, and collective bargaining with unions, a couple of unions have already requested to use the same, same approach. So that's, that's where I am in a nutshell. The selectmen will see, uh, you know, slightly different proposal in their next meeting. And again, to be clear, there's, there's three, three requests, and I haven't really distinguished the last two. The first one is the table of organization, the second one is the different pay and class structure, the grades. So, you know, you saw it in a preview previously, I'll come back to you with what I'm gonna ask for in November. And then the third step is a, an article in front of town meeting to fund all this in November. So those are the three steps. What do the departments look like, what positions need to change, and then approve funding as part of the warrant articles. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments the board wants to make at this time?
Any questions?
The one question I have relates to the packet that we had, and there was, uh, uh, there was a letter in there from, from Sharon, from the town accountant.
That's a good point.
And, so my question is, um, it said in there that, uh, that the titles can't change unless there's a change to the charter.
Right.
That seems to me that if we do approve that, that making a change to the charter so that their titles are in alignment with what they do makes perfect sense, is that something that the, the Board of Selectmen would propose, and that it would be voted on? How, how would that happen?
You'll get a report at November Town Meeting from Alan Foles on the charter, is it commission or committee? Committee. It's the smaller one.
It's not a formal commission, yeah.
And, you know, I haven't been to any of the meetings, uh, but I, I'm informed by Laura, who does go. I think the fairest comment at this point is, there's a lot of enthusiasm. And just in case, in case you don't know, the charter committee is formed with one representative of every precinct and the town moderator. I don't know that they actually got one from every precinct, but they tried their best. In order to really make substantive changes to the charter, you need to have a charter commission, which is about a two-year process. So this is step one to determine whether there's really some, you know, some need for some, some big changes and that's what'll be reported. From what I understand, their enthusiasm, enthusiasm level is so high that they're attempting to be the charter commission. They're very interested in suggesting a lot of changes. And that's fine for discussion. So things like this, it would make sense to contribute into that effort and I can contribute that on your behalf as to lists of charter changes that would be desired. And I know over the years, the selectmen have made some comments about, you know, next time we look at the charter, we should do A, B, and C. I'm sure we're not going to remember them all, but that's something we need to bring up.
So we would be talking about two years out before we even consider doing that. It's not, that's not something that could be proposed as a change before that?
Except as a one-off.
I would, I don't think so. I think it's better for the two-year. It's a legal question whether you could do that under the guise of an administrative simple language change as opposed to a content change.
Because I think the change would actually be very simple.
Right.
We, basically what you, what we do is just give authority to the Board of Selectmen to amend the title of the town accountant, not change any of the functions, but just amend the title.
Right.
And the same for the treasurer collector to amend the title.
Sure.
You know, based on additional duties that may be assigned by the town manager and/or Board of Selectmen. Because right now, if you look at the charter.
Yeah.
You, you got a town accountant and you have a treasurer collector and that's all you got.
Right.
Right. So, yeah, that's a fair point. I'm glad you reminded me of her letter in the.
That was, that was, I just wanted to bring it up because, you know, I can understand having a title that doesn't quite sync with what you're doing and, you know, that, that seems like it should be an easy thing to fix.
It seems so static, the way it's written, that the charter describes it and it's such a ponderous method to get it fixed.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, so maybe the, the long-term change is to change that ponderous method.
Yeah, yes.
And the short-term change is to just change the title or change the authority so that we can make the title what, what it is, what, you know.
Because we have made some minor changes to the charter over time. They do eventually have to go to a vote.
Right.
Yeah, right.
You know, but we have made some, you know, some minor ones. But, you know, the other thing, Bob, is that I would also suggest that once you have your, sort of, your data collected.
Hmm.
And sort of looking towards the collective bargaining process, that we have an executive session to discuss sort of, you know, how that, how you see that process flowing.
Okay.
You know, for this round of discussions. It'll be different than we've done in the past because I assume that with the coterminous contracts of the school and the town, that, you know, there'll be a very high degree of cooperation between you and the superintendent, let's say. But.
And the same with all the unions, I'm sure.
Yeah. But I think it would be helpful for the, you know, the board to have some, some insight and discussion with you on that.
I'm meeting, I think on Thursday, either tomorrow or Thursday, with the HR director, the two business administrators, and the three department heads that have unions. And we're all going to start a collectively discussed strategy and issues in common and then issues in difference. I don't know that that's ever happened before, but it just seemed like a good idea for those people who are involved in the negotiations individually to sit down collectively and who knows what they might think of. But, yeah, I will certainly update the board. I'm probably thinking of either December or January. I don't know if we're going to do much negotiating before January. I'd like to. I just don't know how practical it is. Some of the unions have already indicated their willingness and I'm sure they all are. By our collective bargaining procedures, there's a certain deadline by which they need to notify that they want to participate in collective bargaining. And I don't remember the date. It's either December first or January first, somewhere in that neighborhood. Normally, negotiations have not started till February-ish. But in the year where we had some real economic difficulties, we started it in the late summer. At least we attempted to. So this is somewhere in between. We'll squeeze it in as we can. So I'll update you. I'll say in January, sooner if appropriate.
Anything else, Bob?
No, that's all I have.
Any other questions, comments? We've already covered the minutes. If there's no other questions, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Four zero. Good night, everybody.